Hi Jeff, I just want to make sure my audio is working okay. Hey Jeff, can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Yes, everything's alright. He stepped out for a moment, so I didn't want to answer for him, but.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I help you, Anthony?
Okay, am I supposed to be seeing video or not?
Nothing yet, the meeting hasn't started.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Alright, we are live.
There we go. Good evening, this is the planning commission meeting, March 2nd, 2021, 6:00 PM, electronic meeting. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with ordinance number 20-A16. Important is to ensure the continuity of the government during COVID-19 disaster. Opportunities for public, for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on www.albomarl.org/community-county-calender when available. Madame, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Hey? Mr. Randolph?
Present.
Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Bivens?
Present.
Ms. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Claiborne?
Present.
Mr. Corazana?
Here.
And Mr. Keller? Mr. Keller's absent tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there matters, are there matters not listed on the agenda for public comment? Hearing none. We have nothing on our consent agenda this evening, so moving straight into our, our moving into our you won't believe this, but I missed, I printed the wrong agenda. I'm in a bit of a pickle. Because the agenda I have is from another time, so I need an agenda put up on the screen right quick while I'm going to one. That was really embarrassing.
Yes, sir, I can think of that.
That's horribly embarrassing. And I apologize profusely. That printed out from, I don't know what the printout from, but here, I have, I think I can do it through here. While we're doing it. Let's see, we have a public eating, meeting this evening for ZMA 22,007 RST residences.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt if I might, there was the matter regarding the Scooby property that requires a vote on a proposed deferral.
Oh, a proposed, thank you, that's why I don't have, oh. Actually, no, I think maybe this one. You know what, thank you counselor, I didn't have the wrong agenda. I just wrote over the fact that we weren't going to do that tonight, so I was going to the main, to the main event, so we had.
It still requires a vote on the deferral.
I absolutely appreciate that, I saw, what is that, that's double between, and we're doing something bigger than that, okay. So, uh, we have an item before us, SP 20, 2012, the Scooby property tier three personal wireless service facility. This item has, the applicant has asked for us to defer this, is there any information that needs to be known besides other than that? Mr. Rapp.
Uh, Mr. Bailey? Mr., Ms. Firehawk?
Are you asking us to vote on whether we defer?
Yes.
Yep.
We haven't gotten a motion yet.
Is there any additional information?
I vote yes.
Is there any additional information which we need to know?
Oh, sorry, I thought you asked me, um, no.
Okay, is there a motion to defer?
Don't move.
Motion to. Okay, go ahead Cory.
Excuse me?
I'll second Cory's motion.
Seconded by Jenny, now would you call the call?
Hey, Mr. Bailey? Ms. Firehawk?
I, am I coming third?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Yes.
Mr. Randolph?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
And Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Thank you.
So if you would let the applicant know that their, the request for deferral has been accepted. Now, moving on to our public hearing for this evening, which was actually on the piece of paper I had in front of me, it was just underneath this other one. Uh, public hearing for ZMA 2020 00007 RST residents, residences, may we have the staff report, sir?
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, can everyone see my PowerPoint and hear me fine? Okay, great, thank you. Um, good evening, my name is Andy Rattlebach, and I am a senior planner at Albemarle County Planning Division. And we are here tonight for a public hearing for a rezoning request, application numbers ZMA 2020 00007 titled RST residences. Um, so to give you a brief overview of the location of the property that is the subject of this rezoning request, here is an aerial map with the site in the middle there, it is two separate parcels right along Route 29 at the northeast corner of the intersection of Ashwood Boulevard and US Route 29. Um, to the east and northeast are the, are areas of the Forest Lakes neighborhood and then near the eastern side of this aerial photo, you can see Sutherland Middle School and Holly Need Elementary School, which are two of the local schools that this property is within the district of. And then at the bottom of this photo is the Brook Hill Development, and it is currently under construction. Um, this is another aerial view of the site, which is more zoomed in, you can see it's right there at the northeast corner of Ashwood and Route 29. On the Ashland Town Homes section of Forest Lakes neighborhood is directly to the southeast of the property. Um, there are forested properties to the north. Um, and then across Route 29 are additional forested properties as well as communications towers adjacent to Burkmar Drive, which is in the top left corner of this picture. Um, and then for those of you who are driving along 29, is kind of a street view of the site, one of the parcels that this project is this motel just north of the Ashwood intersection, which is one of the more visible aspects of this property from the 29 frontage. So a brief overview of the proposal before us this evening, as I said, it consists of two parcels, taxman parcels with six dash one oh eight and four six dash one oh nine, together they total approximately nineteen five one acres. Um, the existing uses on these properties include, as I mentioned previously at the hotel, there is also the Ridgewood Mobile Home Community on TMP 46 dash one oh nine, and there is a small historic cemetery also located on parcel one oh nine. The applicant is requesting to reserve this property to PRD Planned Residential Development to allow for a maximum of 370 residential units. And then also tonight we'll hear about an associated special exception request that the applicant has submitted to modify the step back requirements for buildings over three stories or 40 feet tall, whichever is less. Um, so as an overview of the zoning of the site and the nearby sites, the current zoning of this property is R1 residential, which allows one dwelling unit per acre, and as I mentioned, the applicant is requesting PRD Planned Residential Development, which allows up to thirty five units per acre. Um, by right with R1, the current R1 zoning is the applicant would be allowed to construct up to nineteen dwelling units with the possible addition, addition of more units based on bonus factors up to fifty percent. Um, and that would depend on how those bonus factors work, some do require um, discretionary approval, but at fifty percent at most, the applicant could construct approximately thirty units based on bonus factors. The overlay zoning districts along this property include the entrance corridor overlay district, which is along Route 29, the airport impact overlay district, and there are areas of both managed and preserved steep slopes on the property. Um, looking at the nearby zoning, existing zoning of other properties, um, to the north on those forested properties, they are also zoned R1. To the west across Route 29, the properties are zoned RA or rural areas. Um, surrounding a lot of the site, the Forest Lakes neighborhood is in PUD planned unit development. And then as I mentioned, the Brook Hill Development, which is currently under construction and is just slightly to the south of the subject property is zoned in empty neighborhood model district. Um, regarding the comprehensive plan for this property, this surrounding area, the subject property is within the community of Holly Need of the places twenty nine maps to plan. Um, and there are two land use designations on the property. Urban density residential, which is the orange color and the privately owned open space, which is the dark green color. And the privately owned open space on the subject property is really just a narrow strip along the Route 29 frontage, so it may be a little difficult to see on this map. Um, other land use designations for the surrounding areas are um, additional areas of privately owned open space that largely follow either existing open space or environmental features such as stream buffers. Um, neighborhood res, neighborhood density residential, including the Brook Hill property and areas of the Forest Lakes neighborhood. Um, the Ashland Town Homes to the southeast is also designated as urban density residential. There's one property designated as institutional right across Ashwood Boulevard from the site at the southeast intersection of Ashwood and Route 29, and then to the west across Route 29 are properties designated rural areas. So to go into more specifics of this proposal, the applicant is requesting a maximum of 370 dwelling units, however, what is being currently proposed with the application plan is 362 dwelling units, which includes 254 multifamily apartments. And 108 two over two style townhouse units, so it would be a two-story townhouse. and one hundred eight two over two style townhouse units. So it would be a two story townhouse um, on top of any other two story townhouse. And the applicant has indicated that those are intended to be sold as condominium units, whereas the multifamily apartments are intended to be rental units. Um, the gross density of this site is eighteen point nine seven units per acre, which falls roughly in the middle of the recommended density for urban density residential, which is six point zero one to thirty four units per acre. And the net density of the site, which removes those areas designated as preserved steep slopes, comes out to nineteen point eight nine units per acre. So approximately one unit more, but still well within range of the urban density residential land use designation. The applicant is proposing four point eight eight acres of open space and recreational amenities on the site, which is twenty five percent of the site and does meet the requirement of a twenty five percent minimum of open space for planned residential development. Uh, the applicant is proposing fifty percent of the units to be affordable housing, which is more than what is recommended in the comprehensive plan in the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, which is fifteen percent. Um, the applicant is proposing buildings of between three and five stories tall as depicted on the application plan. Um, and in the urban density residential land use designation in places twenty nine for residential buildings, four stories is the maximum recommended. And so there are two buildings in the center of the property or two wings of one building kind of in an L shape that are depicted as five stories. So that would be more than what is recommended in the master plan. And then, as I mentioned previously, the applicant is requesting a special exception for modifying the requirements for step backs for those buildings over three stories to eliminate the required fifteen foot step back. Um, this is a a view of the application plan that the is provided, showing the upper areas, which are the kind of orange hatched areas around the perimeter. There's a proposed one hundred foot forested buffer along Route twenty nine, which the bottom of the screen is to the west. Um, and the left of this photo is north. Um, just to help orient everybody, the kind of burgundy colored squares and rectangles are the proposed buildings. The four to the bottom and in the center of the screen are proposed to be the rental apartment units. And then the five, um, burgundy blocks at the top of the screen are proposed to be the two over two townhouse units. Um, the gray dashed lines show the proposed circulation within the site. Um, the green hatched areas are areas of proposed open space and recreational areas. Um, and then you can see down at the bottom of the screen is the, um, is the location of the cemetery as well. And the applicant is proposing a sidewalk or pedestrian path to provide access to the cemetery. Um, and then the areas of gray that are kind of finger like are the areas of preserved steep slopes. And the applicant is not proposing to disturb those slopes during construction if this zoning map amendment were approved. Um, and this slide shows you just a conceptual layout of the development based on the application and shown previous slide showing a little bit more detail on the residential buildings, on where the parking spaces and parking envelopes would be located and where the open space and recreational areas would be located, including top lots or asphalt recreational area. Um, the applicant is indicated that a pool is a potential amenity area there in the center triangular area of the development, a dog park um, along the eastern property line, which is kind of near the top of this depiction. And then some of the proposed stormwater management areas you can see kind of in the very top along the northeast corner of the property, which is the kind of a narrow green rectangle. Um, one aspect of this development that I did want to highlight is the affordable housing. The applicant is proposing at least fifty percent of the total number of dwelling units to be affordable. So that would be one hundred eighty five units maximum based on the applicant's request for three hundred seventy units. However, as the applicant is proposing three hundred sixty two units, that would come out to one hundred eighty five units. Applicant is proposing that those units could be for sale, for rent, or a combination of both at the owner's discretion. Um, and the terms of the affordable housing are provided on the cover sheet of the application plan in the lower right hand corner. And just a few highlights of the terms is that the affordable housing would be available to individuals making eighty percent of the area median income for the Charlottesville area. Um, for the for sale units, the applicant would provide the county a period of ninety days to identify eligible purchasers. In that ninety day period would commence upon written notice to the county from the applicant that the units will be available for sale. And the notice shall not be more than sixty days prior to receipt of C O for the applicable dwelling units. For the for rent units, the affordable housing rentals would be affordable for ten years following the issuance of S E O, a certificate of occupancy. Regarding access and circulation to this site, there are two proposed entrances into the site. One on the western side of the property, it would be right in, right out off of Route twenty nine. And then the only full movement entrance into the site would be at the southern end of the property on Ashwood Boulevard. And this proposed entrance is opposite Archer Avenue, which has not been constructed yet, but is proposed as one of the major north south roads through the Brook Hill Development and would ultimately connect up to Ashwood Boulevard. The applicant is proposing that all of the internal road rate, roadways of this development be private. However, three of the roadways, travel way, travel ways A and B is designated on the application plan, as well as private roads C would have public access easements to allow other members of the public to use those roads. Um, so one private road, which would be constructed to private road standard is Road C, and that is the one that goes north from the Ashwood entrance to the northern property line. It is roughly parallel to Route twenty nine. And the applicant is proposing an easement, um, near the northern property line for future extension of this road. If the properties to the north were developed, the other roads in the development are designated as travel ways for internal movement through the apartment and condominium complexes. And the applicant is also proposing internal sidewalks and pedestrian paths throughout the development um, along both sides of most of the travel ways and private road C, as well as a sidewalk or pedestrian path parallel to Ashwood Boulevard. One item that I did want to bring up, as it has been an issue of concern, is taxman parcel forty sixty five dash one D. And this is a newer piece of property that is located between the applicant's property and the Ashwood Boulevard right of way. Um, it is property that is currently owned by the Commonwealth of Virginia, um, that had been acquired as part of the Route twenty nine improvements. Um, the proposed project entrance off of Ashwood would cross this property. Um, and so after conversations with staff, the applicant did provide a letter written by V dot, which is included in the staff report as attachment A outlining the process for converting this piece of property into public right of way. And so I did just want to mention that it is not public right of way at this moment, but it is, um, according to V dot. There is a route to convert it to right of way. And so as this project moves forward and if the rezoning were to be approved by the board, it would require further action by the property owner in V dot and follow up by the county to finalize that access and the conversion of that property into right of way. Um, and this is a chart showing impacts to the schools in the area. This property is within the school districts for Alamo High School, Sutherland Middle School, and Holly Need Elementary School. The column on the left is the enrollment capacity for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, um, where Holly Need and Sutherland were both under capacity and high school was already over capacity. Um, the middle column, enrollment capacity is the projected enrollment capacity for the twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty school year um, based on the school system's numbers, and this would not include this development's proposed generation of students. So Albemarle High School would be over capacity, Sutherland Middle School would be just slightly over capacity, and Holly Need would be under capacity. Um, and the numbers in the second to right column are the projected number of students generated by RST based on the calculations provided by the school system that they use. Um, so RST would be expected to generate approximately forty seven elementary school students, fifteen middle school, and twenty two high school students. Um, so if those students were to be generated as expected, then Holly Need Elementary would become over capacity, as you can see, by about four students over. Um, and then Sutherland Middle School would be over capacity based on the twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty projections, and Albemarle High School would also remain over capacity. So this is a list of the factors favorable to this request. As I mentioned, the request is consistent with the uses and density recommended by the places twenty nine master plan, including as a residential use with a mix of housing types and density that does lay within the range of six point zero one to thirty four units per acre. The proposal provides at least fifty percent affordable housing, which is more than the fifteen percent minimum recommended by the comprehensive plan. The request proposes to provide additional pedestrian connections in the area, including parallel to Ashwood Boulevard, connecting to the existing multi-use path that is along Route twenty nine. And the request does at least partially address the twelve neighborhood model principles, which are included in the staff report as attachment number five. Um, factors unfavorable to this request is that the proposed development would result in additional student enrollment at area schools, including Albemarle High School, which, as I mentioned in the previous slide, is already over capacity and would contribute to the other school, Lynn and Holly Need as well, um, reaching near or over capacity by the twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty school year. The proposed height of some of the buildings is inconsistent with the recommendations of the mass places twenty nine master plan, which, as I said, recommends a maximum of four stories for residential buildings in urban density residential designation. Um, number three, although the minimum amount of open space has been provided, the intent of the PRD zoning district is identified in the zoning ordinance, recommend an improved level of amenity. And that cannot be analyzed at this time with the information currently available. And then, um, although most of the neighborhood principles, or although all of the neighborhood principles are at least partially met, um, it is important to note that most of the neighborhood model principles are only partially met, and they could be strengthened.
Andy, Andy, hold on for a second. Let me pause you there for a second. We're, we're, we're having some, some, um, some sound issues. And so we're going to have to sort of straighten that out and then look towards Charles to see if we can, if this needs to take place now, or you want to keep moving. Charles.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, this is, I think we only have one more slide at this point, but it's something I think we need to address. Uh, I, I know there may have been some concerns about sound there. So if PC members and others were having some challenges hearing, uh, we could take a pause and try and address that, uh, from some technology challenges I think we're having there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the PC members to sort of chat, sort of send a message to Charles if you're having a, or to the group if you had a, a serious problem. Otherwise, take that for a second and just let's, uh, let's hold for about thirty seconds and then just keep on rolling if I don't see anything in the chat box. Not seeing anything in the chat box. So Andy, why don't you keep going? Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, can everyone hear me? Okay, um, so we are at the staff recommendations. Um, so based on the previous factors favorable and unfavorable that I listed in the previous slides, at this time staff is unable to recommend approval of ZMA twenty twenty dash seven RST residences. Um, in addition, staff is unable to recommend approval of the special exception request, S E twenty twenty dash three RST residences, which is to modify the requirements for a step back of fifteen feet for each story that exceeds forty feet or three stories, whichever is less. These are the suggested motions for both rezoning requests and the special exception requests when we get to that time of the meeting this evening. Um, and I am available for any questions now or after the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. As soon as I get the screen back, then I can see everyone to see who has questions for Andy at this point. But I can't see everyone as of yet. Do you want to unshare that part of your, ah, thank you, I gotta rewind back. So, uh, who has questions for Andy at this point before we move forward? I see Karen and anyone else? Karen and Louise? So why don't we go Karen, Louise, and then whoever comes up after that?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Andy, I'm wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on the lack of specificity in the open space amenities. You said that the developer, applicant rather, uh, did, did meet the minimum standards. But could you elaborate again a little bit on in which, what ways the information was not sufficient? Was it the type of amenities were not specified or, or what?
Yes. So the, um, as I mentioned, the applicant does meet the minimum twenty five percent open space requirement for the PRD. However, in the zoning ordinance for the planned residential development, it is the intent that PRD have an improved level of amenities. Um, and so there are areas in the, uh, shown on the application plan that do meet the minimum square footage, which would equal out to four point eight eight acres on in areas for the required number of top lots and, um, basketball courts, that sort of thing. However, as I mentioned, a substitution request identifying additional amenities or that sort of thing that would be over and above what is recommended, has not been provided. Though I will say there has been a dog park and a pool shown on the application plan or on the conceptual layout.
Thank you.
That's all, Karen.
Andy, you mentioned the, um, historic cemetery. Is that designation coming from a historic registry or D H R?
Um, not that I know of. Um, I believe it's just a cemetery with several, um, older tombstones in it. And the applicant has provided information that they're not aware of who the actual owner of the cemetery is based on descendants um, of those who are buried there.
Do you know if there's been any archaeology performed to properly identify the boundaries of that cemetery? Cause I, I did see that the site disturbance goes right up to it.
Um, I am not aware of that. I don't know if maybe the applicant has additional information on the level of investigation that's taken place on the boundaries of the cemetery.
Now, just for staff, that might be a consideration, uh, some requirement for archaeology. That's all I have.
Anyone else, anyone else have a question for Jenny and? So starting with Jenny and then perhaps others. Jenny?
Um, Andy, uh, for the special exception to modify the step back, do you know if that's for all the buildings? Or is it just for the apartment buildings?
Um, it would be for the five, um, structures of the two-over-two townhouse units, which are four stories as well as the two wings of the central L-shaped apartment building, which is shown as five stories tall. And then the other three apartment buildings are proposed only be three stories. So they would not meet the step back, especially.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, then can we go to the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Valerie Long here representing the applicant and the owner of the property, RST Development. We have a number of representatives of our project team here tonight. I'll give them each a quick introduction so you know who's here and we can draw on their expertise as needed. Um, first, we have Scott Copeland with RST Development, also Alex Mayes with RST. We have Carl Holtgren, who is with Remy Kemp and Associates, our traffic engineers. We have Ryan Yager with Bowler Engineering, Civil Engineer. We also have architects from LAS Architects, Neil King and Scott O'Brien, and also my colleague Charlie Alvis is with me. So we look forward to talking with you about this. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right, hopefully everyone can see the blue screen. Great. I'm gonna move people around a little bit so I can see everyone and hopefully try to look the right way most of the time. First, I want to introduce a little bit about RST residences, uh, RST Development. This is their first project in Albemarle County. It is a family-owned business. Scott and his brother Todd and his father are the RS and T of RST Development. They've been developing affordable housing projects all up and down the East Coast for several decades. This is their first community in Charlottesville, and we're really excited to have been working with them over the past year. I know that, um, Mr. Riedelback showed you the, um, where the property is, and it's pretty clear as he's noted, it's been a, um, a trailer park and old motel for many years. As you can see, just while I have this image up, a number of those residences were located very close to the property line. I know that's a question that's going to come up later, so I wanted to mention that. You've seen the zoning already. It's R1 zoning. Uh, we also have the relevant portions of the Places Twenty-Nine Master Plan showing that the property is designated for urban density residential. Uh, there's a number of, this is a different vantage point, so it's turned around. Route twenty-nine is in this location, and you can see the lime green areas that are somewhat onsite as well as offsite. Those are preserved steep slopes, which are not to be touched except for certain exceptions. I want to start right off with the affordable housing commitment we have made with Mr. Copeland's permission. He has agreed to make some enhancements to the affordable housing commitment. He's been planning to make these all along. Again, his primary business is affordable housing. From the very beginning, we had hoped that this project would stand on its own. And we continue to feel very confident and adamant that this project satisfies all the county requirements, including all of the neighborhood model, uh, principles, and certainly merits your support, even if it only had the bare minimum requirement for fifteen percent affordable housing with a ten-year affordable, uh, term for rental properties and eighty percent AMI affordability. A few weeks ago, we updated our proposal a few months ago to provide that instead of just fifteen percent, that fifty, half the units would be affordable to those making up to eighty percent. Again, RST has always been planning to do much more significant affordable housing, but there are a lot of variables involved in the project. One, uh, we not, need to make sure that the other elements of the project are, um, approved, but also it's subject to underwriting, uh, state, uh, low-income housing tax credits are going to be involved. So we were hesitant to make too much commitment. We also were a little hesitant to, um, frankly, get out in front of the community about what we were able to do. But given some of the questions that we've received in just the last few days, um, RST asked that we go ahead and, and make it clear to all of you that they've enhanced the affordable component substantially. And as a result, we can commit tonight that seventy-five percent of all of the apartments onsite will be affordable. It's a minimum of a hundred and ninety units. The affordability range would be from between thirty percent and eighty percent of the area median income with an average of at least sixty percent. And the affordable term would be for thirty years. Just a quick summary, there's also, as Mr. Riedelback noted, there's townhomes in the backside of the property. That's a hundred and eight units. They're condominiums. They would be proposed, at least right now, they're being built just down the street, half a mile away in Brookville. They're selling like hotcakes and they're selling for under three hundred thousand dollars. So if that can continue, those units would meet the county's affordability requirement of eighty percent of AMI. And then again, when you combine those with the two-hundred-and-fifty-four rental units, seventy-five percent of those would be affordable for thirty years at an average AMI of sixty percent. You saw the pictures already of the existing mobile home park in the community, and you've got your bearings, I think, about you as to where it's located. This is a colored version of our conceptual plan. Uh, these are the two-over-two townhouses in the back, the apartments. I'm going to talk a lot about these two buildings. Uh, this is the cemetery, uh, Mrs. Saranza. We did have this surveyed prior to submitting any applications. So the rectangular areas around, those are the surveyed boundaries of the cemetery per an old plat that was of record. So right now, there's no fence involved, but as part of the project, they would fence that area and also provide a path, uh, for any family members or other visitors to that cemetery to keep it available. The area in orange around the boundaries is a landscape, or excuse me, a natural buffer that would be left in place as much as possible, except where you might need to have utilities come through. It's twenty feet on three sides. It's a hundred feet wide along the Route twenty-nine frontage, which is a recommendation of the Places Twenty-Nine Master Plan. The area in yellow is currently part of the VDOT parcel. Right now, the area in yellow and the area in blue are a single tax map parcel owned by VDOT. As we've been working very, very closely with their right-of-way team and with Adam Moore locally, who've been incredibly helpful in helping to ensure that the connection that would be made um, across Ashwood Boulevard and aligned with the future Archer Avenue will be made. As part of our site plan review, this area in yellow would be added to VDOT's right-of-way inventory, which would then allow the connection to be made at that time. This area in blue would remain owned by VDOT, and I believe they have plans to market that for sale. There are also a number of amenity areas, as was discussed here. There's a central pool amenity area, uh, some recreational areas, another tot lot, tot lot over here. Um, I'll go ahead and touch on a few of those issues raised in the staff report. With regard to the amenity areas, at the rezoning stage, the only requirement is that applicants demonstrate that it's reasonably possible that they will be able to satisfy the amenity requirements at come-site-plan stage. So as staff indicated, we do demonstrate that we can achieve those amenity requirements. At the site plan stage is when it is typical to submit a substitution request officially. That's when we've always done it. Um, we think that the amenities are well-spaced in this location. Most importantly, the swimming pool and other amenity areas is dead center in the community. So we think that's the best location for that, so that it's centrally available and located to everyone. Some of the other amenities are spread out, one so that they can be, you know, spread out, and some are closer to others, but also because the buildings are set back, you know, as far as we could from the adjacent property lines. So because they're not buildings in these locations, it was a good place, we thought, to locate amenities. And again, over here, we have a tot lot that's a little bit closer to these areas. Regarding the sidewalk or the retaining wall here, first, there is a sidewalk along this entire area. Pedestrians will be able to access the swimming pool from all sides of the area. If this retaining wall were not here, there would need to be a fence there anyway for both safety, security, and also noise reduction. It's a bit of a zoomed-in view. I can skip over some of these. I'm happy to come back, obviously, with any, and use these to answer any questions that you may have, but I'm cognizant of my time. These are the townhouses here. I have a slide coming up that shows the distances that these buildings are set back. These buildings here are set back a hundred and twelve feet. This is about seventy-eight feet, and I believe this one's in the range of eighty-seven feet. So we worked really hard to have those buildings be set back as far as we could from the adjacent neighborhood. Um, and at four stories, we have some slides that will show you that they do not create an adverse impact on those adjacent neighbors. This is an image showing just the pedestrian connections throughout the site, the community. We've added sidewalks every single place that staff has suggested if we did not have them already, including, I don't think it was highlighted as much in the staff report, this component of the sidewalk along Ashwood is through the VDOT right-of-way. So that's an off-site sidewalk that the applicant has requested to make. Um, so we're, we, we're very proud of the pedestrian connections and pedestrian design.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
More about that later. Uh, with regard to the green space, this is the combination of the amenity areas that preserve steep slopes. We're not touching those steep slopes. In fact, we're staying five feet back from them, and then other green space that will remain onsite, including the buffer areas. This is the concept plan. You've seen this. I'm going to skip on through.
I'm sorry, Valerie, but your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I have a few more slides that I can cover, um, in response to any questions that may come up, including this one that you see on the screen that talks about the special exception requests and why we believe that has merit to waive the requirement for the fifteen-foot step back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Questions for the applicant? Corey, and then Corey, and then Karen.
Uh, Valerie, thank you for the presentation. Um, one of the concerns that I have is regarding the, the mobile home community that's existing. Could you guys talk a little bit more about the plans on how to handle that? Um, so you're not displacing folks and some of those key points in, in that plan, in the timetable? If you guys give some more detail on that?
Absolutely. I appreciate you asking that question. Um, a couple of things. One, um, from the very beginning, RST has been very cognizant of this issue. And obviously, as in, as part of redeveloping an existing community like this with affordable housing, they've been very sensitive and cognizant about it from the beginning. The very first thing that they did was hire the prior owner of the community to be their onsite manager. He's been managing the property for decades. The whole time he owned it, he was the manager. He has long-time relationships with these residents. And Scott and his family members asked him to stay on board. They hired him. They've been paying him ever since to be the manager and to, among other things, assist the residents with relocation plans. They, as you may know, under state law, you're required to give, uh, residents at least six months' notice of any relocation deadlines. In this case, RST will have given almost eighteen months of notice. The residents are, there are a couple of residents who are still there. The vast majority have successfully been able to find other housing, make other arrangements. There were a few existing units that are still onsite. Some of those, um, are waiting to be moved by new owners. Some of them will just be left in place if they don't meet the code. But the vast majority of folks are, have either moved on and found new housing or they've found new housing, but they're waiting for their move-in date. Um, so we've been working with them very, that, or not we, the owners and, and the manager, I've been working with the residents literally since RST acquired the property, I believe it was in, um, November of two thousand and eighteen, um, and provided plenty of time. They originally provided a twelve-month period for relocation. Once it became clear that it was going to take us much longer to work through the review process on the rezoning, they extended that deadline for another, I believe, six months or so. So, um, I hope that answers your question, and I'm, I'm sure that Scott Copeland or others can add any additional information if, if you have any further questions.
Yeah, thanks, Valerie. So I guess where I was going is, what's the timetable for all folks to, to be relocated? And I'm asking, speaking of the COVID, when you read about folks losing jobs or can't make the rent or can't make payments, just how does that all play into things?
Sure, and I, obviously, that, you know, over the last year, that's been a, a challenge. And that was also part of the reason that, um, Scott and his team wanted to provide as much extra time as possible. Um, I believe, and I'll ask Scott Copeland to jump in, but I believe the current deadline is through the end of March. And I'll, I'll let him jump in with any additional information.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you, thank you, um, and thank you for the question. Um, I don't really have much to add. Uh, the, 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 the current period is March, the end of this month, that we just recently extended a, a few weeks ago, um, from the end of February. Um, we have extended several times throughout the COVID process for that, the, the COVID period for that very reason. Um, we have one resident left on the, on the property that does not have, um, a definitive move-out date and plan yet is, is working on it, and, and we are assisting and finding, um, another location, um, for them to reside. We provided a, a great deal of information for the residents from the very beginning. Um, we've, we've held on to, um, the, the actual homes, some of which are not movable. Um, in many cases, they don't, uh, meet what is called a HUD standard, I believe, is, is the vocabulary um, that, uh, uh, because of their, of their age. So in, in many instances, they're not able to be moved. So we have accepted them. They've become a liability, obviously. So we, they, we, we've allowed the owners, um, to leave them in, in place, and, and we would handle that liability for them. There are a handful, um, that are still, as, as I already mentioned, that are still onsite that are waiting to be moved. Um, and then the balance of which we, we own, um, RST owns, and, and was part of the, the acquisition of the property.
Thank you. Another question is in regards to the, the school system. And, uh, there was a stat, the, I think it shows like eighty-four students roughly would be put into the school system projected. How does this project plan to handle that?
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I think the most important way that we're planning to handle that is by providing a place for those families to live and those students to live. Um, obviously, those students are either here in the community right now, or they will be coming. And we think the best way to mitigate the impacts of those students is to ensure that they have safe, affordable, clean housing in the designated development areas near the schools. Um, the elementary school and middle school will not be over capacity. Obviously, it's well-known that Albemarle High School is over capacity, but I know from, um, we've been working closely with the schools, um, and to understand what their plans are for that. Two things, one, obviously, land was, uh, proffered and dedicated or committed to be dedicated to the county as part of the Brookhill project for both a high school and an elementary school. There's also an elementary school proffered at the North Point Community. I understand that the county may not be interested in the North, uh, Brookhill High School site anymore. I'm not certain, but I know that they're also, um, working very hard on what they call the Center Two concept to further spread out some of the students that either are at Albemarle now or would be there in the future. So we've also looked a lot at the, um, school capacity numbers, and I have some data, if you'd like me to share it, on actual, um, students that are, that are usually, um, that live in apartment complexes. They are much more realistic than the county's projected formula um, and results in a much smaller number of, of students. So even, that's obviously debatable, and, um, who knows how it turns out. It depends a lot on the unit mix. A large number of these units will be one and two-bedroom, which obviously don't generate as many students. Um, but we feel like the best thing to do is to ensure that these students have housing to live in that is affordable, and that that is the most important thing. Thank you.
I'm done, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I would actually like to see the, the slide graphically depicting the rationale for the step back, please. If that's okay, if we could have that back. I, I wanted to see a visual depiction. If that's okay, if we could have that back. I, I wanted to see a visual depiction of that.
So is that coming from staff or coming from the applicant?
I have it, Mr. Chairman, if that's agreeable to you.
Please.
Thank you. Okay, hold on one second.
And after Karen moves, is there someone while we're waiting for, from as long to, to pop in? Is there anyone? So Daniel and do we have anyone else after Daniel? So then Daniel, you'll be after Valerie for finishes and Karen.
Okay, I think I have my, I think I'm sharing my wrong screen just for a moment. I monitor gets uh.
We see the special exception.
I think we can see it. Okay, great. So this is, let me back up if I can to one slide to orient you to where we are. Let me go to this slide.
So you know nothing has changed.
I know. Um, let me do this. Let me just go back. So to orient you, it, this is the main entrance off of twenty-nine, the first two buildings. These are three-story buildings. This is a three-story building and this is a five-story building. And it's actually a single building. They're connected in two wings. So the image that I'm going to show you is essentially looking at these two buildings here roughly from the traffics, from that roundabout circle. So this image was prepared by our architects to show the impact that the step-back requirement would have. And for, just to reiterate the regulation, it applies to all buildings that are taller than three stories. And no matter where they're located within the project, after, starting with the fourth and subsequent floors, a fifteen-foot step back is required. So essentially where you see the red line, that would cut that chunk out of that building. This is a challenge for any mid-rise residential buildings. It's possible to do this at a, a scale if you have tall um, very tall buildings like you see in downtown Charlottesville and along West Main Street, some of the newer student housing buildings have this. Or a building like this, that will completely decimate the floor plan of the fourth and fifth story of these buildings, if that's enforced. The purpose of that requirement is to avoid the canyon effect, essentially. We think that by virtue of this five-story building being located adjacent to a three-story building, that there really is not any canyon effect that needs to be mitigated. And that, you know, the other thing we looked at and, and Scott can, can uh respond to this, but my suggestion was, well, can you just spread that floor out? And instead of having a five-story and a three-story, can you just have a bunch of four-story buildings? That has a financial impact in that once you go over force, you go to four-street floors, you need to have elevators and other child, other, it just adds substantially to the cost of the building. So the goal was to try and again, in order to meet the affordability goals and targets, to have this be a five-story. We just don't think that it has an impact. Um, got a few things here. There's parallel parking and sidewalks that spread out the distance between those two buildings to mitigate any canyon effect. Um, the five-story buildings are visually prominent because they have shared indoor amenities. And probably most importantly, it's located right in the heart of the community um and form, you know, the hub with all of the amenity areas in it. They're very far from property lines. Let me skip ahead to some other exhibits. Again, here, this is another rendering which you may have seen, again, showing that it's not, we don't think that there is any more, any difference in terms of a canyon effect between this three-story and this five-story, say, compared to these buildings here. Likewise, all eight of the buildings that contain the two-over-two townhouses would also be subject to that same requirement. On the second, or excuse me, the fourth floor of these buildings, if you, and if we are not successful in obtaining a waiver of the step-back requirement, the impact on the second floor of that unit, it would remove two of the three bedrooms, one of the two bathrooms, the laundry closet, and would take out half the staircase. And so as a result, you would end up with units that are essentially a one-story, excuse me, a one-bedroom town, one bedroom, one bath townhouse. Not marketable to anyone, certainly um not the goal. So we can, I can elaborate further, but that's um the, the main issues with why we think the waiver has merit.
Thank you. I don't have any, any other questions at this time.
And can we go away and see who else we have? Does anyone else have their hands up before we go to? I think Dan, Daniel and Jenny.
Just a quick uh question, but um it could be for applicant or possibly staff, but the uh cemetery that was talked about, is that part of the twenty-five percent open space calculation? Or has that been withheld from that calculation?
I, I don't, I don't believe that's part of the twenty-five percent. Uh Valerie, can you confirm that? Or Ryan, can you confirm that, please?
I'm gonna double check it. I've got it open.
It i- it is not part of the twenty-five percent. It's actually on a separate parcel. Uh, but it's part of the overall development, but it was on a, a separate flat parcel, not part of the twenty-five percent.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else to, this one, Jenny?
Um Valerie, how tall are the, um, I mean, I know there are four stories tall, the two-over-two, but you don't have any feet? I don't know if that was in, I didn't see that.
Yes, they are forty-eight feet tall.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
But Jenny? Jenny, at all? And anyone else? So could you just clarify something, please, Valerie? So the thing that's being um shared with us this evening is that a desire to have one hundred and ninety of the apartment units be affordable and, and have that affordability be for thirty years? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, in essence, seventy-five percent of all the apartment units would be affordable and that equates to one hundred and ninety units affordable for thirty years. And the, what we call the affordability range, it would be affordable to those making between thirty and eighty percent of the area median income.
Okay, and so if I just, to get some clarity on that, i- is there a relationship between um RST and Hercules Real Estate Services? Those friendly companies together?
Uh, yeah, if I, if I may, um, uh Scott Copeland, yes, um Hercules Real Estate Services is a wholly-owned subsidiary, a subsidiary of, of RST Development.
Okay, so let me continue one question. So in some of your properties, you have special relationships, so you offer a special relationship with certain types of employees. Is that the kind of thing that you're thinking of?
So I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not a hundred.
Excuse me, so like the federal, the federal employees, county employees, first responders, medical, uh, medical, uh, personnel, personnel, people like that?
There, there are tremendous opportunities to do that very thing. Um, part of the, part of the reason um that we want to see the wide range of affordability, uh, which is, which again goes from the thirty percent level and in essence, all the way to market rate level um and averaging in that sixty percent range. It does give you an opportunity to uh provide housing for individuals or, or groups of people that you just mentioned. Um, often there is a challenge in, in the affordable housing world of, of people qualifying. So there, there are narrow windows, if you will, of, of making too much income as a household to qualify to live in the, in the project. Um, and then on the other side is, you know, obviously having the income to, to pay the rents if, if you do qualify. So there, there, there are narrow windows at times, but the the opportunities that we're creating for ourselves with this wide range um does provide for, for, you know, that opportunity with teachers and firefighters and first responders, et cetera.
So what I would understand, just to extend this, so while that's not on the site plan as we, as we received it prior to tonight, when this, assuming this goes before the supervisor, that, that, that will be modified on the plan?
Yes, sir. You, you mean the levels of affordability?
The levels of affordability and the, and the amount, and the amount of time, because.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, because that's something new.
I, I understand. Yes, sir. Yeah. But it, but it.
Before we receive anything else new, I just want to make sure that's going to be locked down on a piece of paper.
I, 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 I understand fully and, and I assure you it will be, yes.
Okay, are there other, are there other questions for the applicant before we? Hoping for public hearing for this matter and uh I will then turn it over and be guided by um, by Carolyn, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivins. Um, we have a large list right now of people already signed up to speak. I am going to um call you by name. I'm not going to give this spiel each time. I'm going to let y'all know that you have three minutes to speak. Please state your full name and address and your, and then I'll tell, once you do that, you're, once you start speaking, your three minutes starts. So first we have um Scott. And I'm sorry if I'm not good with last names. Scott. Um, El, Elif, please state your name. You're the first person, so you get the full spiel. Please state your name, address. And as soon as you start talking, your three minutes begins.
Am I unmuted here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for the opportunity to provide our public comments. We have a lot of ground to cover because there are so many issues regarding this proposal that uh, that we have. It's deficient and unacceptable in numerous different areas and you're going to see that in, in great detail well beyond the, the building heights and special exemptions and even the minimal open space area and so forth. Um, if you go to the next page for me, please. Carolyn?
Yep, they're, they're taking care of it for you.
Okay, we'll get this down. I'm still just seeing my name here.
Your slide is there.
Your slide is there.
Okay, and do you blow it up then? Or I don't, I still just see my name?
Uh, we're working on getting it blown up for you.
Yeah, you make it, I guess you'll make it a slideshow overall then, right?
Yes, yes.
The individual names are divider pages in our whole PowerPoint, so you could just use that. You could put that up and just go flow through that way. Because you've got all the names in there.
Okay. Okay, I am going to go ahead and let you get started all over again. Okay, there you go.
Okay, well, we're going to cover a lot of ground because we have a lot of issues here. If you can go to the first page.
We may not be able to do your slideshow presentation. We seem to be having some um issues behind the scenes.
Well, you would do it the same way that uh Valerie did hers, I guess. You would be the presenter and you just go through the pages one at a time.
Uh, it's a little different. Um, we have two different platforms that we do this on.
Okay, do your uh, do your planning commission members have the uh documents and can they open them?
They are not copies.
We're, we're seeing your document now that says what are you.
Oh, okay, there we go. Okay, great. Okay. I just thought for a minute, but now I don't.
Can you go ahead and get started on what you're talking about? All the.
Yeah, we all, we're all going to want to use the, the visuals that we created specifically for this, of course. So if we can get that straightened out, that'll be the, the way to go. Many of our comments relate very specifically to the charts and analysis and examples that we've created just specifically for this tonight.
Okay, can we take a?
Can we take a brief pause and I, we can find a way to get that through on our end?
So here's what we're going to do. We're, it's uh nineteen, it's seven-ten right now. Uh, we're going to take a, a break until about, do we need five minutes, Charles?
That'd be great.
Till seven-fifteen and then we will all join promptly at seven-fifteen. Is that okay?
Are we staying on or do we need to sign off and come back on?
No, you stay right where you're at. We're just going to pause.
Causing your comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. All right. I'll be here. So that shows, that's a full-screen slide for me anyway. Uh, Carolyn?
Sorry.
That, that's a full-screen slide for me.
My problem is, is that it seems like every time you start talking, the slide goes away for some reason. I know, I don't know. Yeah, we're working on it.
That's fun. That's a lot of fun. I'm, I'm sure.
Hold on just one second.
You want to make me the presenter?
I don't think so. I think we have it now. My technical people are telling me that they think they got it fixed.
Okay, so let me see. So if I, if I speak, does the, it looks like the slide stays there?
Yeah.
Okay, so just as a test, if I say, go to the next slide now, let's see what happens.
Alright.
Okay, and if I say, go, if I say, go back to the previous slide? Okay, beautiful. Okay.
Okay.
At the end, introducing each person, we have a page with their name on it. So you don't, you don't use, need to use the other name stuff. I set that up so you can just roll through this, this presentation, you know, kind of fully contained.
I still have to, I still have to do the three-minute timer, so.
Of course, of course, and all, and our people all know that as well, so.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just three more minutes and we'll get started again.
Sure, I know this is fun, so thanks.
Crystal, can I help you? Crystal, are you just raising your hand that you want to speak later?
You good, Carolyn?
I think we're ready to go.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, I gave, so I have to be good to my word.
And yeah, and then Carolyn, remember about two-thirds of the way through, we'll have to go to the part two.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Are you just start and Mr. Vivins?
Uh, I see a lot of I assume people are there. Can people at least put themselves back on video? So we know you're back. There we go. Okay. Let's go, Carolyn. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scott, your time starts now.
Okay, great. So I mentioned that we have a lot of issues. We're going to present, as you can see on this page, it's it's pretty wide ranging. It's broad and and deep. The petition's going to be written. It speaks for itself pretty well with respect to the the details. Our HOA board president will speak, and you have a number of volunteer residents who are going to talk about very specific topics. I've done a bunch of research. We're going to have charts and analyses and examples and and all kinds of things, including a couple of areas where we actually contracted our HOA for outside professional support just for this meeting. So we'll get to that in a minute. So if I could get the next slide. And just so everybody knows, this whole presentation from our communities, we're not opposed to development. This is in the growth area, but you know, we think it needs to be done responsibly and appropriately. And from what you see from all of what we're going to show you, this is not it, not even close. Doesn't just have to do with building heights and special exemptions and even the minimal green space areas and everything. There's a lot of other issues, traffic as well. The other important thing is the extent of affordable housing, whatever it is. This new proposal is so hot off the presses that it's not even on this slide. I didn't know about it before, but it doesn't have any effect on our opposition to this. Affordable housing is, you know, terrific and laudable goals and everything. But our opposition is about all the items that we're going to go through with respect to density and respect for the local community, the environment, traffic, property values, and all the rest of it. So you're going to hear from me now and from basically everybody all along that we ask that you deny this application based on so many deficiencies and really need to go back to the drawing board and start this all over in our view. So next page. I'm just going to start with a couple of highlights, and you're going to see these again later. This is a rendering of what those four story buildings look like from Ashwood Boulevard. This was a computer generated model. The guy who did this for us will speak on it later. This is to scale and everything. And frankly, this is shocking. This is incredibly out of scale. It's huge, looks like a college dormitory quad, frankly. You can't even see all the buildings. There's eight of these, actually. This is the eight, what they call the two over two townhomes. There's no trees, pavement, parking and and apartments jammed in as tightly as they possibly can be. You've already heard and seen in a couple of the slides here how dense everything is in here. And this is a really important visual representation of it. We've asked for this from the developer representatives repeatedly, and it was never done, so we contracted for it ourselves. It's important to see what it actually looks like if you turn off of twenty nine and turn into Ashwood Boulevard to go into Forest Lakes. So we'll get into this, including the before versus after a little bit later with one of the other speakers. So let me just have one more slide. And I'll just tell you what the other slide is there. We'll get into this later. The other issue that we contracted for was traffic. Those little blue dots there are all the cars that would back up all the way to Archer Avenue and beyond in the morning, according to the scenario that that we ran, running the standard model that we contracted for. This is going to create just a tremendous amount of traffic potentially between Brook.
Because there are so many speakers, I have to I have to stop you.
Yes, thank you. So happy to go on. Thank you.
Next, I have Mike. Mike, please unmute yourself and your time starts as soon as you start talking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, okay, super. Okay, so and thank you, Carolyn. My name my name is Mike Tuberty, and I think you said you wanted addresses from everybody. So I'm three zero one eight Watercrest Drive. I'm in Charlottesville. Uh, so again, I want to thank you for your time this evening. I'm a twenty six year resident of the Forest Lakes community and presently serve on the Board of the Homeowners Association. My wife Linda and I have always enjoyed living here. It's where we raised our three children. Okay, that was mostly her. But they've they've all grown and they've moved on in their professional and family lives, but Forest Lakes has always been home to them, and we're thrilled that they keep coming back. For much of our time living here since nineteen ninety four, my professional life was spent at Clackner Pentaplex. That's a global plastic films company headquartered about thirty miles from here in Gordonsville. Uh, and I was its president for the Americas during my last eleven years from two thousand three to fourteen, and I was responsible for nine manufacturing sites in North and South America with about twelve hundred employees when I left and I started my consulting practice. Today, in part, I I serve in a director capacity on advisory boards, but mainly, and why I'm telling you all this, in my consulting practice, I work today with business owners and CEOs helping to tackle the biggest challenges and identify best opportunities for growth. So we work sometimes one to one, sometimes together with their leadership teams and sometimes in peer groups, together with other CEOs and business owners for of non competing companies. Why I'm telling you this is simple and hopefully relevant and maybe even illustrative. Oftentimes, we look backwards into problems and challenges to identify where things actually started to go sideways. And we sometimes discuss opportunities for do-overs and what those do-overs might look like in order to establish better laid plans going forward. So my intent here really is teeing up for others that are about to speak and and give you a little bit of a backdrop of what you're going to be listening to and maybe get a chance to consider reconsidering this project or redrafting or fine tuning, et cetera, a growth plan before agreeing to set it into motion and thereby thereby hopefully curtailing the need for a future project autopsy to understand what went wrong, why it went wrong, and maybe have a chance for a do-over before setting the wheels actually into motion. So I think the main concerns of the local residents, my friends, my neighbors and so on, fall into different categories. I won't get into detail because it's it's going to be covered, but really the impact on the neighborhood perspective, whether it's aesthetics, safety concerns, traffic, the potential deterioration for home values and so on. Uh, and then really kind of the big one is is infrastructure, the three hundred and fifty additional new housing units at this time, I think, is simply too much and it's too soon. On the heels of the two huge projects that are underway, the Brook Hill and the North Point that's already been talked on, the current occupancy of our schools and the need for addressing, these are all points that are certainly relevant and and to be covered. But again, I thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing what everybody has to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Sheila.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Yes, I'm Sheila Katz. I live at twenty three fifty two Ravenswood Court. I am literally across the street from where this development, this proposed development would be. So I would be looking at those big, quite frankly, ugly buildings. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you some of the responses that we have had to the petition that was available. And so these are comments that were made by people that signed the petition, which I'm I'm assuming that you have seen. One, I am concerned about the traffic as well as schools in the area not being able to handle this development. Traffic is going to be backed up actually to my development. I don't know how I'm going to get out in the morning. Um, the it's just too it's too many cars. Next, this is a poorly designed, ugly and excessive development that benefits no one except a handful of opportunists, ignoring what is best for our special community. Um, those that housing is harsh institutional kind of housing. There are no trees, no greenery. My home was built in two thousand one. It has a bucolic feel here in this community. And that certainly is not going to be reflected by this proposed development. Next, I don't want to see the aesthetic or environmental impact that this development will cause. So the bottom line is it's ugly. There are no trees. There's no berm. There's no welcoming feeling to coming home because everybody who lives in Forest Lakes is going to have to pass that. There's no way to ignore it. Next, I live in Forest Lakes and want to preserve as much natural habitat as possible. I'm not opposed to sensible development, but this proposal seems overly burdensome and dense. It will definitely put a strain on the area. I think that speaks for itself. Uh, next, school population density will already be greatly affected by the new developments approaching completion along twenty nine near the Polo Grounds. This additional growth creates a growth rate that is unable to be supported in schools and local infrastructure. You know, the the Brook Hill development is going to add, I mean, more than a thousand apartments, which obviously means it's going to be more than two thousand cars because you got a mommy and a daddy in each apartment and everybody's got a car. So that just jams up twenty nine. Next, the scope and scale of this particular proposal is outside the plan for spaces twenty nine and unprecedented in Albemarle County. It places.
Your time is now. I'm sorry, but your time is now up.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I have Helen Marie Field. Helen, please mute yourself. Three minutes starts now.
Thank you. My name is Helen Marie Field. I live at three one six eight Autumn Wood Strive, and I want to thank you for allowing us to speak today. On January fifteenth, the Daily Progress published a letter written by Scott Elif entitled "Overdevelopment Puts Albemarle at Risk." It summarizes many of the concerns you will hear tonight and emphasizes the critical point we are at in overdeveloping twenty nine North and changing the character of the place we call home. I would like to read into the record a couple of the comments written in support of this letter. Written by Brad Elhart on January twenty sixth, quote, "This is ridiculous. Has money been approved for new schools to accommodate this growth? This will bring an unsafe amount of traffic through Ashwood Boulevard. The planning of the twenty nine North corridor needs to take a serious pause before moving forward with all of these developments, or else we're going to have a dire situation with overcrowded schools, unsafe traffic patterns, and other surfaces such as EMS that cannot meet the needs of all the people," end quote. Written by William Volrath on February twelfth. "This proposed development is an unbelievable affront to common sense and good aesthetics. It seems straight out of the nineteen fifty's style of Soviet architecture, not to mention it is clearly of excessive size for the entrance area to a residential neighborhood of quality, single family and higher end townhomes. Furthermore, the already overcrowded schools and roads serving this area simply cannot handle such an increase in population density. Rejection of this ill conceived development is the obvious best choice for preserving the healthy environment so many have worked to create," end quote. "As you know, this proposed development is at the entrance to Forest Lake South. I live in Forest Lakes North, but I want you to know that whatever affects Forest Lake South affects our whole community. We are all in this together. I am very passionate about my opposition to this proposed development. I grew up in Northern Virginia, specifically Vienna, and I have watched the terrible overdevelopment over the years. After graduating from UVA, I stayed in Charlottesville specifically because of its charm and the character of Albemarle County, but this has been threatened more and more each year. As Scott said in his letter to the Daily Progress, quote, "The long dreaded concern of starting to look like Fairfax or Loudon is taking place before our distracted eyes," end quote. And I completely agree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Manley.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Okay, do you have a speaker and a phone on? Is that why it's echoing?
Yeah, I couldn't get the video to work.
Your three minutes starts now.
Thank you. Can you see? Can you go to the next slide? This is showing the berm.
Scott, would you like to read Mark's comments since the echo is so bad?
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes, much better. Well, go ahead and get you started again.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So this this slide shows the existing berm and it from Ashwood. Right, this is the nice trees, the block, the separation between ourselves and the other part of this this community as well as Forest Lakes. Could you go to the next slide? This shows, of course, the the infamous change of the structure of how we're set up. This is going to show us many buildings slapped in. There no berm, no berm, no merge between Forest Lake and the new community. Doesn't fit the neighborhood. The buildings are huge. I think they're taller than the the Charlottesville airport control tower. It's the tallest buildings between Charlottesville downtown and Culpeper. That's pretty big. Could you go to the next slide, please? This shows their map, and it again it shows how much of the space they're using, right? Not only vertically, but by showing the big floor plans or rather the space, the boxes of, but also it gives us a scale, right? Right, that that they're going up four to five story, plus also using all that space, space vertically. So for vertically and horizontally, these are huge. We just can't do it. Next slide. This shows what we were we'd we'd like to see. Setbacks, three stories. Something that would blend with the rest of Forest Lakes. Why can't we have this? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kat.
Hi, how are you? My name's Catherine Smith, and I'm a resident in Forest Lakes. I live at two seven seven five Cricklewood Court. Thank you for taking the time to hear from all of us today. I appreciate it. Next slide, please. So this was a little project we undertook. It is to sort of show the scale of the buildings as they are intended to be built. We used a balloon and raised it up to the height of the buildings as the developers have indicated they would be. And you can just barely see it there on that slide on full screen, but it is well above what is an eight foot privacy fence, which is directly behind some of the homes in in Cricklewood Court. Can you please go to the next slide? So there that that slide shows a little bit more sort of the obtrusiveness of the buildings, the four foot four by four, excuse me, two over two buildings that are the four story buildings. Next slide, please. Hour like that, depending. The the key of this is that the scale of these units do remain a concern. I mean, these current residents, the the residents you see there with the fence right behind it, it's very close to the property line. Right behind it, you can't see it, is a trailer. Now, the trailers are roughly on average thirteen to fourteen feet tall, which is based on the two by two buildings, forty eight feet taller is their height. That's a thirty four foot difference, which in some cases is larger than the buffer that is being touted as being some sort of barrier to this structure, particularly in the Ashland. particularly in the Ashland neighborhood where in some places, the barrier between the buildings and the neighborhood is a mere 20 feet. Next slide, please. And there you see them a little bit more. So one of the problems I think with this too, is this plan goes against the community value of view sheds. The total of the normal structures would make any vantage point obscured, both from the intimacy of our own homes and the public streets. We'd see them straight from our windows. It'd create a lot of light pollution, potential noise pollution. And as you can see, an obstruct, the vantage point of the sky. I think our point isn't that we don't want development. We're happy to have development. We're open to development, but this development is a bit heavy-handed and ham-fisted compared to the neighborhood, particularly in relation to the two-story homes that are currently here. It does not preserve the character of the existing neighborhoods. It's going to remove trees. It's going to damage surrounding landscapes. And so we just want it to be sort of designed in a way that's a little bit more thoughtful. I think that might be it. Check one more slide for me, please. And that's George. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it and I hope you consider our points.
Thank you. Next, we have George. George, as soon as you start talking, your three minutes will begin. George, are you there? George, you have muted yourself. I show you as unmuted now. Okay, George, we're going to have to come back to you. Scott, would you like to take George's comments? Since we can't hear him.
I'm sure I can do that.
Okay.
Just two pages-
Your time starts now.
Right, he's the president of the Ashland HOA. Ashland, as Andy showed at the beginning, is the townhouse development that's directly next to, next to this proposal. It's one-story townhouses. And if you go to the next slide, those one-story townhouses are 70 to maybe 90 feet away from the four-story buildings. So we took a picture of what it looks like from, this is 70 feet away. Did this actually at Brook Hill. If you point your camera straight ahead and look out from 70 feet away, this is what you would see out their backyard, except for the privacy fence on the bottom layer there. You can't even see the entire building. I mean, it basically takes up the whole, the whole camera. If you go to the next page, actually from 100 feet away, you can at least see the top of the building. So you can see what we're talking about. Those are four-story buildings, presumably sort of similar to what RST is proposing. So George's point primarily is that the scale of this, just as Kat mentioned beforehand, is, is overwhelming and, and huge compared to one-story residential townhouses that are in this area. And in fact, as Andy mentioned at the beginning, Ashland community is actually urban density, which is what really, this is supposed to be. Compare what you've got at one-story townhouses and what, what Mark Manley showed is an example of urban density versus imagining that this possibly would qualify as, as urban density or the Places 29 equivalent. So from the Ashland Sub-Association, they obviously are very concerned about this as well.
All right, next, we have Elena. I do not see Elena. Here we go. All right, you have, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to start, just as soon as you start talking.
Okay. Hello, my name is Elena Deliso. I live at 1446 Ashland Drive. I have concern about several aspects of the proposed development. As others are also speaking, I'm going to limit my concerns to just two, although I also share the concerns about traffic congestion, stormwater runoff, and, and school overcrowding. My biggest objective is the proposal for an exception to the density requirement. Maintaining the current county requirement for density, or even lower density, will result in a more enjoyable environment for the future residents, allowing for more green space and less crowded parking. Green space is important for people's physical and mental wellness. A less crowded environment results in a better community, reducing the potential for conflicts related to disputes over noise, parking spaces, traffics, no removal pets, and other situations created by packing more people into smaller areas. This could be an opportunity for building a pleasant neighborhood for people to call home if the density change is not allowed. Also, keeping the berm at the entrance on Forest Lake South maintains the privacy and visual design of the community. My second objective is to the requested exception to the step-back requirement. My understanding of a step-back is to promote a more comfortable environment by reducing visual impacts of taller buildings. The current plan has taller townhome buildings that are, in addition to increasing the density, also creates a potential for intrusive lighting for the Forest Lakes community. Ideally, the aim should be better than just meeting the bare minimum standards. At the very least, the minimum requirement should be met. Exceptions to the density and step-back requirements should be rejected. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Vlad.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Thanks. My name is Vlad Gavrilik. 3027 Watercrest Drive in Forest Lakes. I'm a planning and design principal with a local firm called EPRPC. And I'm also a 15-year resident of Forest Lakes. As Scott mentioned, FLCA hired us to do a visualization and an analysis of the proposed development. And I wanted to share, if you go to the next slide, some points about the visualization first and really address its reliability. You've, you've seen this before, but I wanted to emphasize that we used 3D computer modeling technology, program called SketchUp, to ensure that we had the scale and the viewpoint right. We projected the building forms, the locations, and the heights accurately using this computer model. And then we had a professional render place the facades from the development plans themselves that were submitted to give a realistic impression of what you'd see on Ashwood Boulevard after this was built. Next slide. And we were also asked to do a professional assessment of the proposed plan. And there are some concerns we found front in the plan and where it deviated from what I call professional best practices. Based on my 35 years of experience doing this kind of work all over the country, I had some grave concerns with this layout. And these included things like the building heights, the scale and character, really the compatibility with the surroundings and the open space and street design. My biggest observation, though, is that this is packed in very tight with an overly regimented layout and a lack of what I would call breathing room in this layout. Next slide, please. This plan shows in green some of the modifications that we suggested without completely redesigning this plan. So these included things like lowering building heights, widening streets and sidewalks, and relocating these communal recreation areas so that they could be more central, safer, and more accessible. But one of our biggest recommendations is to do the same buffers that you're doing on Route 29 to the surrounding Forest Lakes community. These 100-foot buffers to Ashwood Boulevard and to Ashland. Next slide. And then the last thing I want to share is we were asked the question, how many units could be accommodated if our suggested modifications were applied to this plan? So here's a revised plan we did respecting their basic layout. What we did was lower the building heights and setbacks to meet county requirements. We widened roads to meet professional standards. It could be better adapted to public roadways if needed. And we apply these buffers and centralize the recreation areas. However, we didn't modify the basic layout, which as has been pointed out, is a very regimented layout. The bottom line is these modifications yielded 200 units down from 362, really 197. We think that's a much more reasonable yield for property using professional design standards.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you very much. That was all I had.
Thank you. Next, we have Alice.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Alice Keys and I actually own two properties in Ravenswood, neighborhood of Forest Lakes, 2326 Ravenswood, and 2351 Ravenswood. Both of these properties will have the unfortunate sightline of this proposed development. I actually live in one of these homes and rent the other one. PowerPoint slide, please. On the PowerPoint slide, you'll see some objectives, strategies, and statements I have taken from the Places 29 Master Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, the Growth Management Report of 2019, zoning regulations. They speak directly to how the proposed RST development does not meet the criteria set forth in these documents and therefore should be denied. This proposed development may meet the density required in the Comprehensive and Places 29 plan, but is done, does not respect scale and character of the existing surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide. It does not complement but distracts from our neighborhood with overwhelming difference in density and architecture. A couple of the objectives discuss the county and developers meeting with neighborhoods. Next slide, please. To minimize any negative impacts of infill and redevelopment and to help new developments blend into the current neighborhoods. This has not happened. Other objectives discuss infrastructure. Next slide, please. That should be in place prior to developments being approved. Says, "Public transportation and schools." At this time, infrastructure is not in place for this development. This developer's not offering any progress to help with that infrastructure. Only at the last minute, even tonight, they keep increasing affordable housing in order to try to get his proposal approved, but infrastructure does not exist to support affordable housing. Next slide, please. The graph on this slide depicts data from the Growth Management Report of 2019, which states that by 2040, 11,750 new dwelling units were needed to support the projected population in Elmore County. At that time, 8,843 units were already in the pipeline. That left only 2,906 dwelling units needed by 2040. In summary, the following statement from Objective 9 of the Comprehensive Plan says, back to previous slide, thank you, says this, "In order for developed areas to be places where new and existing residents want to live, impacts from new development should not adversely affect existing residents and property owners. One way to mitigate impacts is to ensure that adequate infrastructure is in place before a concurrent with development. If roads are overburdened, schools overcrowded, developed areas become places where people do not want to live." Thank you for considering denying this proposal.
Next, we have Paul. Paul, please, okay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Time starts now.
Good, thank you. I appreciate both the opportunity to talk and the considered and well-documented opinions of my colleagues here. I have lived all my adult life in Albemarle County. I've been driving Route 29 North as my commute for about 40 years. And, and in that time, I have watched steady growth and development in the county, mostly well-planned. You know, I, I remember when Rio Road was the edge of the wilderness. And obviously, that's, that's much different now. My wife and I wrote the first contract in Forest Lake South back in 93 and moved in here in 94. And see, so we've watched the steady development here. Forest Lake South is a very livable, walkable, connected development, consistent with the way we would like the county to be. We are very blessed and recognize that not everybody is going to have the same density or quality that we have here. However, the proposed development is definitely not similar to this neighborhood or the livability. It is an instead example of urban sprawl, not in character with the neighborhood that we have now. Ongoing development is a given in this county and generally a sign of growth and healthy economy. And we appreciate that. We know that things are not going to stay the way they are. As I've said, I've watched many years watching things change and have spent my fair share of time in Northern Virginia where things have exploded much more readily. So despite the fact that we want development and understand that needs to happen, this development asks significant exceptions to the existing zoning specifics in the maximum height and the setback. It only really benefits the developers' profit and, and outcome from this development. And while we certainly do want more affordable housing, and there are lots of opportunities across the county, across Charlottesville and Albemarle County for affordable housing, this one really only considers the benefit to density in this particular development. We strongly urge the Planning Commission to consider the precedent set. If this exception is approved, where will that end? Where will that stop for the next person who wants significant development? And to violate the tenants of the current zoning. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do we have Steve?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
I am Steve Cameron. I live at 2774 Cricklewood Court. I'd like to amplify some of the information that was in the county staff report. County staff did an analysis on the overall project plan submitted by RST to see how it melded with the Places 29 Master Plan and to see if the developer had done their due diligence all along. Staff looked at 12 items in particular. Do not, some are included, but not limited to this. Pedestrian orientation, mixture of uses, parks, recreational amenities, and open space, buildings and space of human scale. The staff graded the project plan submission on those, each one of those 12 items as one, met the principle of the Places 29 Plan, partially addressed the principle of the plan, and finally, largely did not address the principle. The overall assessment was that five of the 12 principles had been met. That equates to 41%. Six of the 12 principles had been partially met. And one of the 12 principles was largely not addressed. In delving into the, one of the 12 principles, the one specifically dealing with parks, recreational amenities, open spaces, the staff said, and I quote from their report, "The applicant has provided the minimum square footage of open space required if the tot lots and basketball courts required by the ordinance are installed instead of submitting a substitution request at the site planning stage." Unquote. So what they've done is come in with a minimum and, you know, they can skinny out later on at the site planning stage and go below the, below the minimum. The staff also took a look at the requests for waivers. And we've heard a lot of that about the going from up to five stories. And another quote from the staff said, "At five stories, the two central buildings of the development already are proposed to exceed the maximum recommended height for the land use designation in the master plan. Waiving the requirements for a setback would further reduce the ability to create buildings and space of human scale as recommended in the neighborhood models principles of the Comprehensive Plan." This is from our own professional page of staff of Albemarle County. Last thing I want to say is the Places 29 Master Plan is a- Last thing I want to say is the Places 29 Master Plan is a good document and it should be followed. If this lands to be developed, RST should follow the letter of the law and frankly, put forth a better effort in the future. Thanks for your time, attention, and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Sue.
Hello, this is Sue Friedman.
Thank you. Your time starts now.
Thank you. I thank you again for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I do want to share as someone who's newly appointed to the Places 29 North CAC and as someone who's just completed a tenure term on the Forest Lakes Community Association Board of Directors, I have a great interest in Forest Lakes and in the new developments that are proposed and ongoing in our area. I believe very strongly in community engagement and community service. Today, I would like to address equity in terms of this proposal and three areas that I think merit some equity consideration. What is the trade off in harming an existing development, Forest Lakes, versus giving developer concessions? And what is the expense that we're willing to have those who already live here bear for this new development? Particularly looking at traffic and the aesthetic scope and scale. So again, in terms of how the county and the planning process addresses equity, those who are here, we in Forest Lakes, do we deserve to be harmed? Do we deserve to have challenges and expenses to benefit a new development? Especially with the concessions and the special exceptions, et cetera. And then that leaves me to the number two issue. There are a number of waivers and special exceptions being offered and being requested through this process for RST. And we in Forest Lakes expect the Places 29 guidelines to be executed and followed and don't expect for the number of waivers and special exceptions to be offered to any development. Most particularly, how this development will impact those of us who are already here and who have an expectation of remaining happy county residents, if you will. So we in Forest Lakes have covenants and resident expectations for how we run our organization. And I can say from my time on the Forest Lakes Board of Directors, and we took it as a very important responsibility of the board that we would follow our own covenants and our own guidelines and policies and that we would not offer waivers and special exceptions because those who-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. And the last one is VDOT. Is it appropriate for VDOT to allow access to RST? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have, it's supposed to be Bob Jones, but Scott is going to speak again because Bob was not able to make the meeting.
Yes, please. Am I on now?
Yes, you are.
First page, then. We're going to turn our attention to traffic now. This is the other area where we contracted for another scenario using the standard VDOT model, the same one that the developers, consultants use and so forth. And why did we do that? Because we looked at how many units there are in Forest Lakes now or would be in the future, about 850, 880. And we thought about how many people there were in Brook Hill, number of units that would in the north part of Brook Hill that would come north to Ashwood Boulevard. Nobody knows exactly, but something in the order of 150 to 300. And then you had the RST proposed units, 350, actually more than that now. That gives you an increase of 62 to 80%. So how can it be that the developer's traffic study only showed a 35% increase in traffic? Didn't seem right. We actually asked the developer to run an alternative scenario for us just so we could understand the potential. And they frankly declined to do that specifically. So we spent our own good money to contract it. Same model, just some different inputs. Next slide, please. When we did it, here's what happens. The, the step chart here is the number of cars that would be turning left onto 29 at Ashwood Boulevard in the AM rush hour. So the baseline, which was a car count from 19, 2019, was 369. We basically built it up by adding step by step, updating the baseline, adding the Brook Hill's initial estimate. We reestimated that a little bit in this scenario. Added in the, the developers' transportation impact analysis for RST. We updated that further. You end up with, guess what, 60% more cars turning left than, than was anticipated in theirs. The question is, when does that overwhelm the intersection or result in backups? And our colleagues are going to describe this in a little bit more detail and show you the results, including that kind of shocking chart from the very beginning that shows 404 car backup in the morning, which is obviously incredibly troubling and unsustainable and not approvable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jane.
Good evening. This is Jane Keithley. I am a 25-year resident of Forest Lake South. I serve on the Board of the Forest Lakes Community Association. And I pass through that Ashwood Boulevard 29 intersection daily, sometimes more than once a day. I feel like this RST development as planned is a poor fit for the space at that intersection. There are too many planned units and it will not be able to be adequately accommodated by the local surroundings as we've been describing here this evening. I agree with the sentiments expressed so far and want to add a little bit more on the traffic situation. It's a major concern, the additional traffic, as Scott just outlined, with the increased number of cars will lead to congestion. If I could have the next slide. The, this picture or this diagram shows the little blue cars there are backed up. This would be, this was from our analysis of the traffic situation and shows that 404 foot backup at peak times. You can see it goes back through the intersection with the Archer Avenue access points to the south and through the north, which would be the RST new access point back into the Forest Lake South neighborhood. This is, in addition to the slight backup, you might be able to see to the south on Archer Avenue where cars would be coming up from Brook Hill, attempting to turn on to make left turns onto this Ashwood Boulevard as well. So quite a bit of gridlock and congestion here that would lead to delays, wasted time, and potentially safety concerns as people try to scramble to get through the intersection and so on. The report over on the right-hand side, you can see this report graded this a very poor E, closely bordering on an F assessment for this scenario. Next slide. This schematic shows the same information you just saw with actual numbers of cars. And you can see in the center between the, the gray and the sort of pinkish stripes, 784 is the cars that go through that four-way intersection where Archer Avenue crosses over Ashwood Boulevard in the proposed plan. That mixing bowl area would see an increase down on the left of 52% of cars. And then if you follow this out to the left-hand turn onto 29 South, we would anticipate an increase of 60% of cars turning out of the neighborhood to go south. That's a pretty big increase. We do believe that these assumptions are accurate and reflect the current situation in terms of the number of cars per family and the school traffic. And we believe those are reliable predictions.
But your time is up.
Okay, the next slide just shows the time wasted. And I just asked the planning commission to consider our comments and not support this proposal for development. Thank you.
Next, we have Paula.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready for me to start?
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Could I have the first slide? I would like to explain on this particular, this is, this map of the Brook Hill development has five areas in the northern section circled in black. And these areas are the ones that are in closest proximity to Archer and Ashwood. And we feel that the majority of people living in those areas are going to choose Archer and Ashwood as their morning rush hour route to reach 29, whether they're going north or south. There are also two other areas slightly to the right of that circled in gray. And we think that those homeowners, those residents will also opt, at least in the people going north would opt for the Archer Avenue, Ashwood route. And we're assuming about 50/50, perhaps that heading south would also take that route. The reason being to go the alternative through Brook Hill, going south to Polo Grounds, there's probably, in our opinion, our assumption, kind of common sense assumptions, that they're more likely to encounter school buses, trash trucks, commercial deliveries, and that sort of thing that's going to tie up traffic. And everybody in rush hour is in a hurry to get where they're going, whether it be to their jobs or if they are taking their children to school, whatever the case may be. Next slide. Can I have the next slide, please? Oh, there it is. We see as far as RST assumptions, we see no reason to assume what they did, that the traffic rates for their apartments would be lower than any single-family housing, particularly for the reasons that are listed here. Their apartments, especially what they have presented tonight, are going to cater to working people and renters. People who are going to have to commute to a job downtown or whatever other part of Charlottesville they may be working in. And with such a large share being affordable housing, in order to pay their bills, whatever adults are living in those apartments are likely to have to provide their own transportation.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Bill.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Okay, yeah, my name is Bill Winch. I'm a traffic engineering principal with the firm EPRPC here in Charlottesville. Also a county resident, 3205 Watch Station Drive. EPR was contracted to run some scenarios for the Forest Lake subdivision using trip generation and distribution characteristics per their local knowledge and intuition. The modeling effort, the synchro model was the same model platform used for these types of studies across the state, same, the same as the developer's engineer used. And really, the purpose was to run some what-if scenarios. And you've heard a little bit about this from the, from the prior few speakers there. You know, if the trip generation is higher, if the distribution is more geared up towards the north there. And let's see, and as you could see in, in here from the folks who have talked here, and maybe go to the next, next slide. Okay, never mind. In some of the graphics presented earlier, the, you know, based on these scenarios as developed by the Forest Lakes residents, there could be some additional congestion experienced in the morning peak hours that would cause some backups and multiple signal cycles required to get through the, the intersection. And you know, while these, these scenarios differ from the model runs produced by the, the developer's engineer, again, it's the, the same model, but again, with some different volume and distribution inputs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Bill.
Good evening. My name is Bill McLaughlin. I've lived at 1800 Easy Lane in Hollymead for the past four years. I'm a Hollymead Board Member and have recently been appointed to the Places 29 North Citizens Advisory Committee. Like others, I believe that as proposed, this development is overly dense, was insufficient usable outdoor space. My concern is for the health of the people who be, who will be living there in relation to the threat posed by airborne viruses similar to the one causing the current pandemic. As planned, this proposal simply has too many people and not enough space. As we are all well aware, the current pandemic has struck most heavily at the central workers that cannot work from home and often work closely with the public. And of course, it is just these people who most often live in high-density housing. I realize that density is not the only factor in COVID transmission. However, for an April 2020 study done by Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, quote, "Data from a new county level model show social distancing policies, population density, and temperature are the most impactful factors in the spread of COVID-19." Now, when I brought this up at an earlier public meeting, the developers representative assured us that COVID-19 would be over before people move in. So we didn't work, we didn't need to worry. This may be true, however, should we be building new, super-dense housing based on the assumption that a pandemic like the one currently will happen only every 100 years? Admittedly, the developer has provided for some open space so residents could follow Dr. Fauci's succinct prescription that outside is better than inside. However, a good portion of that open space is in the buffer zone adjacent to Route 29 or on steep slopes, neither of which are conducive to residents actually using them. Therefore, not for my benefit or the benefit of any of the people speaking here tonight, but for the health and benefit of the people who will be making their homes in this development, there needs to be fewer units and more open space. One other point I need to make is regarding access. Five of the other parcels on Route 29, can I have the next slide, please? Sorry. The next slide. All right, never mind. Five of the other parcels on Route 29 in this area have only right turn-in, right turn-out access. The RST parcel is developed in a modest way. Then this same type of access would be adequate with no need for a traffic-disrupting street intersecting with Ashwood Boulevard. Thank you for your-
Your time. Thank you. Next, we have Rich. Rich, please unmute yourself and when you start-
Hear me? Thanks. I'm Rich DeMiglio and I live at 2674 English Oak Circle in Forest Lake South. And thank you, as others have said, for allowing us to provide our input. So next slide, please. I've lived in, I'm sorry, maybe go back. I think my slide's got a little out of order. Go back two slides, please. There you go. I've lived in Forest Lake South since 2009. In such, I routinely drive in and out of the Forest Lake South Ashwood Boulevard exit onto Highway 29. And many of us are concerned about the impact that the proposed new street connection, I think it's listed as Route C on the application plan, from the RST development to Ashwood would have on both the traffic flow and the general safety. In normal times, as has been pointed out, the traffic leaving from Forest Lake South can already get backed up on Ashwood to the point where you can't always catch a left turn light onto 29 South during AM peak hours. And add to that, as has been discussed, we're facing a significant increase in traffic load onto Ashwood from the new Archer Avenue being connected north into Ashwood from the new and very large Brook-
from the new Archer Avenue being connected north into Ashwood from the new and very large Brookhill Commons Development to ourselves. Adding yet another connector road to Ashwood from this RST development will only serve to exacerbate the traffic problem and could cause accidents as cars are attempting to turn and merge together in a rather confined area of space where there's a bend in the road and some difficult areas for visibility. We did note that the fifty-page, rather complex traffic impact analysis that was done with data from the day of mid-December twenty nineteen. But from looking at that study, there appears to be a lot of assumptions, variables, and unknowns that go into creation of an analysis like that. And I would ask that the experiences of those who have actually exited Ashwood for the past decade be considered as well. Reality is, we don't know exactly how this new Archer Avenue is going to impact traffic flow and safety there. And to add on yet another intersection there does not seem to be advisable. Now, it was noted in the prior slide, Section fifteen dot two dash twenty-two eighty-three of the Code of Virginia, which encompasses the purpose of zoning ordinances, subsection double I, notes that zoning ordinances shall be designed in part, quote, "to reduce or prevent congestion in these public streets," unquote. Therefore, I simply ask that you consider the impact of the congestion Ashwood Boulevard, if you were to permit this new connection. Next slide. In summary, I would ask that the commission oppose RST's development request to have an easement or some other right-of-way through V dot own property to Ashwood Boulevard, since there's a very real probability that's going to cause a traffic and safety problem. And add this proposed Road C as an unfavorable factor in your consideration. We believe the solution is simple. If the RST development is simply right-sized, then the existing right-in, right-out access to the property at Ridgewood Drive that the residents in that area have used for decades may be more than adequate for the RST development, and the traffic congestion and safety on Ashwood would not be negatively impacted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah.
Hi, thank you. This is Deborah Brammer and I live at one-one-five-five Rustic Willow Lane in Forest Lakes. I'm concerned that if this development is approved, that our overcrowded schools will become more overcrowded and our property values will be negatively affected. Albemarle County schools are already overcrowded and some of the classrooms are actually bursting at the scene, basically because new developments are always being approved. Could you put the slide up, please? You'll see in this slide that is an Albemarle County School Board Long Range Planning Capacity Enrollment Study, various numbers. If you look at the column that is current for this school year in twenty-one twenty-two, you'll see that at Baker Butler, it is projected that it will be a hundred and fourteen students over capacity by the coming school year, and it will get worse from then. These, mind you, these projections are based on new housing permits and the projection of existing student base. So these, these projections don't even include all the new developments that are coming down the pipeline, and there probably are a number of them. Now, if you look at the next-to-last line, which has the Albemarle High School, it is projected that in the next coming year, the high school will be, there'll be a hundred and sixty-three students which, that will be bursting out of the walls. And by two thousand twenty-nine, it will be over capacity by almost four hundred students. And this is before we even add any more developments on. So as, as the school system as a whole is obviously over capacity and it's getting worse. And the, the, my point is that if developments keep being approved, we can either do, build more schools, which is great, the quality of the schools would be maintained, but they cost a lot of money. And not only, we would get money from bonds, but we'd also get money from the taxpayers. And that is you and me. And that will decrease our property values. The other thing is, we could keep approving developments and keep stuffing kids into the existing schools, which will overcrowd the schools even more and diminish the overall quality.
Your time is up.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tamara. Yes, we can. Your time starts now.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Hammond. I've been a resident of Forest Lakes for twenty-six years. I live at thirty-one twenty-five Turnberry Circle. Thank you so much for hearing all of us tonight. The topic that I would like to touch on is the RST development and the Albemarle Climate Action Plan. Slide one, please. One of the main themes of the Climate Action Plan is to protect our local natural environment. It also states that the plan is as much about the kind of place we want to live in here in Albemarle County as it is about reducing the community's contributions to global greenhouse gas emissions. Speaking to just this proposed development, it appears that these basic principles are not being considered. Slide two, please. Kind of blurry here, but this is a software shared by the Piedmont Environmental Council that tabulates current vegetation on any given landscape. Currently, in this space, trees account for about fifty-five percent. I think it's probably a little bit more than that, and grass twenty-five percent of the flora. Currently, there's sufficient buffer between the developments, Route twenty-nine and Ashwood Boulevard. This makes this kind of place we want to live, both aesthetically and sustainably. Next slide, please. With the proposed development, shockingly different. The entire twenty acres will be clear-cut, leaving only the required one hundred feet of buffer along Route twenty-nine, removing mature trees along Ashwood Boulevard, and leaving an absurd twenty-foot buffer along the shared line with all adjoining Forest Lakes homes, twenty feet. Not very much. Bulldozing these mature trees near these houses will endanger those left by undoubtedly cutting into their roots. Trees canopy buffer greatly reduced, or worse yet, gone. It's not really a place that you'd want to live. Next slide, please. Yes, we're in a growth zone and not opposed to growth, but clearly, the message from the Climate Action Plan is not being followed. This slide shows a thirty-two hundred acre swath of the northern corridor showing current vegetation of about fifty percent trees, twenty percent grasses. With maybe an eighty percent loss of those resources, we've got pretty awful results. Our top priority should be to make this a place where indeed, we'd all like to live, where the current surroundings are taken into account to benefit the quality of life for all residents and to protect the natural environment. We're asking the Planning Commission to be good stewards and strongly consider the Climate Action Plan on these issues, not only for the RST development, but for all future development in the northern growth area. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Dick Billings. Mr. Billings.
Good evening. This is Dick. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You may start now.
Super. First slide, please. By the way, I am Dick Billings. I am a member of the Board of Directors here at Forest Lakes and live at sixteen oh five Pepper Ridge Lane and have been a resident here for just about twenty-five years. The, the slide I'm showing you is a topographic view of the Ridgewood area. And one of the things I'd like to point out in this is this represents, first of all, the highest ground in the local area. So every bit of rainfall that hits this development has to run off to somewhere. One of the things you'll notice is the, on the north side of this parcel is a ravine, and it's sixty foot deep. Now, this is where our concern lies, both in construction phase as well as ongoing residential phase of this development. So we, we are not aware of any actions to reduce runoff or manage it. And we're very concerned about that. Next slide, please. So again, once again, the Ridgewood has the highest elevation in the immediate area. The there is a significant reduction in open land to absorb any runoff in the current proposal. That has to be all managed essentially with, with storm drains, which is obviously not where we are today. The in Forest Lakes has, has a history of dealing with these issues. I would refer you to the Hollymead Town Center Development, where our Hollymead Lake was significantly affected with siltation. And we don't want to see that again. What we would like to see is any plan going forward have a requirement for one hundred percent remediation of any damage to the local area. Any questions? Please get in touch with me. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gail.
Good evening. This is Gail Hayes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You may start now.
Great. So my address is twenty-two forty Reserve Circle in Rockingham, but I grew up in Hollymead and my parents currently live there. I have a PhD in environmental engineering, so I was asked to provide some inputs on the environmental aspects of this project, particularly with regards to the water quality concerns. So you'll hear me, you'll hear me echo some of what Vlad Kirvilevic, Tamara Hammond, and Dick Billings, excuse me, Dick Billings said. Bottom line up front is, I believe that the plan is not acceptable as it has been presented and should not be moved forward until substantial changes have been made. So it strikes me the most as a transformation of the site from the vegetated and forested plot with low-density development to primarily just buildings and pavement. Natural vegetation, as we are probably all familiar with, is really good at managing its own runoff. But the current plan is basically to replace the natural landscape of forest with roofs and pavement and highly manicured, highly manicured open space and maybe a few trees scattered around. So this will result in significant increases of runoff volume from the site that in turn will cause issues with erosion, flooding, and deposition of contaminants in the downstream areas. For example, on the northern edge, the site drops off very sharply to a local stream. Without the proper design in place, the stream is vulnerable to adverse effects from the project, such as silting, flooding, erosion, and contaminant transfer. Secondly, the plans call for few trees, except for the perimeter buffers, which seem inadequate. He's been mentioned several times so far. Specifically, the east side buffer of the plot in particular is only twenty feet in width. Mature native trees from oaks to dogwoods can require at least this much space between themselves and another tree in order to thrive, meaning that there would likely be at most a single row of trees in this quote-unquote buffer. Furthermore, the twenty-foot buffer is stated to allow fences, dog parks, pedestrian and multi-use paths, as well as stormwater management facilities within itself. My professional opinion, such a narrow strip cannot support any one of these functions and still serve its buffer purpose. So good stormwater, stormwater management uses a range of designs that are distributed around a developed site. Examples include rain gardens, swales, manufactured treatment devices, green roofs, et cetera. Each system treats a little bit of the runoff to prevent a single system that is liable to fail from having to handle all of the runoff. While not all developed sites allow for distributed stormwater management, I see no reason why this particular site cannot support that. Instead, what I'm seeing is a single stormwater management system on one edge of the site. There is no evidence that any analysis has been done to show that the single system, whatever it will be, is up to the task at hand. While detailed designs are not required at this point, it is both reasonable and environmentally responsible to ask that environmental analysis be conducted on this project.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Todd. No, it's supposed to be Todd McGee.
Todd McGee, sixteen oh six Purple Sage Court. I'm currently a resident of Forest Lakes and have been part of the neighborhood since nineteen ninety-seven. My first home in Forest Lakes was on Ashland Drive, which is one of the groups of homes that border the proposed development. I'm chair of the Architectural Review Board for Forest Lakes and also sit on the Board of Directors for our neighborhood. I agree with the concerns made by my colleagues and neighbors this evening regarding the scale of the proposed project. As a local Realtor, I see the opportunities for new development and also get to see the impacts new developments have on the immediate areas surrounding them. Unfortunately, this project would have a negative impact on the value of the homes that border the site. Redeveloping the site and erecting four- and five-story buildings that tower over the one- and two-story homes right on the edge of an existing neighborhood is not a good decision. Packing three hundred and fifty-plus units into the area is also not a good plan. The Places twenty-nine guiding principles state preserving the character of existing neighborhoods. It also states respecting the scale of the existing development. The proposed development will have a negative impact on the value of any home that is directly adjacent to the site. The homes in the sections of Ashland and Teakwood that border the project will have a decline in their market value as a result of the density and scale of the buildings, which are not compatible with Forest Lakes. Developers have a responsibility to use design principles to promote compatibility between new and existing developments. We would encourage the developer to rework the project using the guiding principles of Places twenty-nine plan that would respect the suburban scale and character of Forest Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Donna.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, you may get started.
Thank you. We've all heard a lot of facts and figures tonight. I'm not here to deliver more data. I'm here to address the intangible and unmeasurable human impact that this proposed development has upon the Forest Lakes residents. My husband and I were transferred to the Charlottesville area from the northern Michigan arena. We specifically chose Forest Lakes for the trees, the walking trails, the open spaces in the dark skies. We loved the country atmosphere inside the convenience of the city. We knew the area behind us was zoned residential and would someday, someday be developed. But we trusted in the integrity of the twenty-nine master plan. We never dreamed that waivers, special exclusions, or expanded stepbacks would create austere concrete high-rises that would breach our privacy, invade the dark skies, and potentially cause runoff flooding. Like most of our neighbors, we've made significant improvements to our home, especially since we've chosen Charlottesville as our retirement home. We have earnestly paid our real estate taxes and believe that whether you're a young or old resident in Forest Lakes or anywhere else in Albemarle County, that your real estate holdings fund the next chapter of your life. So it's so disheartening to hear from Todd and Nest Realty that this development as proposed will have such a detrimental effect to our future property value. I'd like to emphasize the fact that I cherish both my front and my backdoor neighbors. I look forward to those new friendships that will come with this new development. I don't oppose the new development at all. However, I am asking this committee to consider the human aspect of their decisions. I want you to please think seriously about the trust we placed in you to uphold the twenty-nine spaces' master promise to uphold the 29 Spaces' master promise and to deny these excessive plans as they are proposed. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next, I have Paul.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you may start now.
Hello, my name is Paul Maruza. I live at 1755 Golden Tree Place. I've lived there with my wife, where we raised our four children for 26 years. I'm currently, I've been on the Hollymead Board for about 10 years and I'm currently the president. I'd like to draw the commission's attention to Hollymead. There have been a lot of excellent presentations and descriptions from the Forest Lakes South and Forest Lakes North communities, to which we are contiguous. So we are really all part of one community. But I would like to represent our Hollymead neighbors to you. We are 468 families and individual residents. And we have single-family homes, condos, and townhomes. Hollymead's the the older brother of the developments in the Forest Lakes. We've been here for many years. The trees are mature and we are a walking neighborhood. Children walk to the schools along Hollymead Drive. This this development, which will be also contiguous with Hollymead, will affect the traffic. We will have increased traffic, as estimated on Hollymead Drive, for those who are going to avoid going out the the overly congested Ashwood Drive. That will affect the safety of pedestrians with that congestion. We are, of course, concerned with the aesthetics, which people have gone over very well. It is a very block Soviet-style construction, which is will be seen from all over. It is very dense, too dense. We do not also agree with the waivers from the 29 Plan that are proposed. Also, all of the developments here, to include the mobile trailer park, always have used the topography and respected it with ridges and valleys. This new development shows no respect for the topography of the area and completely changes the way the old mobile park home was configured. So with that, I'd just like to, on behalf of the Hollymead Citizens Citizens Association, speak out against approval of this plan as it's proposed. I see my.
Next, I have Jimmy.
Hello, everyone. You can hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Great. Hi, my name is Jimmy Berannick. My address is 1925 Becker Lane. I live in Forest Lakes. In fact, I'm the Forest Lakes President, current board president. For those of you that don't know, Forest Lakes is the largest homeowner association in Albemarle County. 1,500 homes and about 5,000 residents. And as Paul mentioned previously, Hollymead is right in between us. So we are one big happy neighborhood, Forest Lakes South, Hollymead, Forest Lakes North. I want to take this time to thank for all the the planning commission for caring enough and spending so much time. I know we're approaching three hours here, but this is an important topic. Also, I want to thank all the great citizens of North of the Albemarle. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you for signing petitions and for speaking out tonight. I love your passion. To me, it comes down to this, and I'm going to sum up what everyone said before me. The 29 Master Plan says preserving the character of the neighborhood. These large dormitory-style buildings in no way, shape, or form preserve the character of the neighborhood, not to mention what it does to our lakes, what it does for the precedent you guys set. If you guys approve these four- and five-story buildings, what's the next developer going to come around and say? And it is, none of us wanted to start at the corner of Ashwood Boulevard and 29. In closing, as we've requested at the beginning of these comments and several times throughout for so many good reasons, and again now, we ask that you deny the RST developments proposal and send them back to the drawing board for a complete overhaul. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening and keep working hard.
Thank you. Next, okay, that ends their presentation. Next, we have Crystal Passmore.
Hello.
Crystal, please state your name, address, and your three minutes starts now.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to comment. My name is Crystal Passmore. I rent at 1510 Amber Street. And my comment today is just that I would like people to have homes. I want people to have affordable homes. I want people to live in the town where they work. I don't want people to have to commute from Rutgersville if they work in Charlottesville or if they work in downtown Albemarle. I don't know anything about view sheds or intrusive lighting. I just want people to have homes they can afford. This is an area you guys want developed. The developer is giving you the green space you asked for. I would also like to point out that there are 370, if not more, people plus 85 children who aren't represented tonight. Those are the people who would benefit from this being built. The residents of Forest Hill kept saying no one benefited from this project. And I don't know why they said that. They were wrong about that. I wish 370 people who want affordable homes could be here to talk to you guys. But they literally don't have the homes right, these homes right now. This sounds like a nice community. It's a beautiful area. Everyone who's spoken before me has convinced me that this is like a lovely place to live. I would love it if you guys would allow more people to live here. And that's all I have to say. Just please allow this development to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Karp.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Okay, my name is Josh Karp. I live at 1510 Amherst School. So the proposal that we're hearing tonight will provide for 190 affordable apartments at families making 30 to 80% of the AMI for 30 years, plus 100-plus townhomes that will be affordable 8% AMI without subsidies. This is all kind of abstract, these numbers. Who knows, you know, AMIs and percentiles. We're talking about 200 actual families. What kind of families would they be? I want to be a little more concrete about this. So I have a toddler and he goes to daycare in Charlottesville, YMCA. The teachers there make about $12 an hour. That's about 30% of the AMI around here. I know a bunch of the teachers, and one thing they all have in common is they don't live around here. They can't afford to live in the city, in Albemarle. They live in Louisa or Flavano or Green. If we had affordable housing at 30% AMI, then my kids' teachers could live a bus trip away from work and not spend an hour and a half every day in their cars. I know they're concerned about the projects. People are worried about property values. Those concerns frankly are not realistic. A study a few years ago from Habitat for Humanity in this area showed that building affordable housing actually increases property values in the area. But in any case, I think it's more important that people have affordable housing than that property values continue to go up. I checked out the the property values in the area, and these houses in your neighborhood are worth $500,000 plus. If you want to deny affordable housing to maximize property values for people who have that much money, maybe you can come to my kid's daycare and explain to the teachers why they can't live in the area. Honestly, if you think property values matter more than people having a place to live they can afford, you should be ashamed of yourselves. I also want to talk about the stepbacks for a minute. I know there are complaints that they're too small and people don't have enough space. But space costs money, and bigger setbacks mean fewer homes and higher prices. I have lived in studios. I've lived in a single, single occupancy. And I can tell you that when money is tight, I am happy to sacrifice a step back if I can pay my rent. People write that housing is more important than aesthetics. Please support the project. Thanks for your time.
Next, we have Chris Hawk.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Chris Hawk with the Piedmont Environmental Council. PEC recognizes that the applicant's updated affordable housing component is significant, and it addresses a large portion of our concerns related to the affordable housing component of this rezoning. And we thank the applicant for these substantial changes. We hope the applicant, Planning Commission, and Board of Supervisors will work together to address our concerns regarding connectivity, public transit, walkability, special exceptions, public schools, and onsite tree canopies as it pertains to this development and its environs. If this rezoning is to move forward to the board, we ask that the missing public infrastructure, such as public transit and walkability to nearby surfaces, be addressed. These issues are outstanding in Places 29 North as a whole and should be addressed regardless of the outcome of this rezoning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Rory Spelsenberg.
Yep, that's right. Thank you, Ms. Schaefer, and good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to speak tonight in favor of this project. I'd like to remind you of several points from your own comprehensive plan. First, land use objective five, promote density within the development areas to help create new compact urban places. Encourage developers to build at the higher end of the density range on greenfield sites, provided that development will be in keeping with design recommendations in the neighborhood model. Encourage developers to build within the density range recommended in the master plans on infill sites. Ensure that housing is equally available to all populations. Provide for a variety of housing types for all income levels and help provide for increased density in the development areas. Provide affordable housing options for low to moderate income residents of Albemarle County and those persons who work within Albemarle County who wish to reside within Albemarle County. Your comprehensive plan, your Places 29 North master plan, your climate action plan, all demand that you support dense, affordable developments within your development area. I'd like you to think tonight about the residents, your potential constituents who would live in these homes at the 30% AMI level, all the way up to the 80% AMI level, who don't have the opportunity to raise HOA dues on their neighbors, to hire professional consultants and engineers and PR firms, and enlist the local supposed environmental firms that they sit on the boards of to help oppose this housing in their backyard. Think about them and whether they'll have a place to live. And I urge you not to send this back to be downsized and to eliminate homes so fewer people can live there, but to embrace density and having homes on this site and to maximize this use of the land so you don't tear down acres and acres outside of the development area for a large lot, expensive, detached, energy inefficient, low amenity housing that you will be forced to have if you don't allow apartments and stack townhomes for affordable rentals and for entry-level homeownership opportunities. Thank you, Planning Commission, for your consideration and have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Matthew.
Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Matthew Gillican. I live in Charlottesville, Virginia. I wanted to speak in favor of this project. It's really remarkable to see how consistently affluent neighborhoods in the county gather their resources together to fight against housing for people who don't have the resources they have. I spoke to you all a number of months ago. It's actually the last in-person thing I did before the pandemic, speaking in favor of the Parkway Place development. And I appreciate that you all voted in favor of that. I hope that you will take the same tact with this project, voting in favor of what, as best I can tell, is one of the most generous and robust profers of affordability the county's ever seen. I think that the opportunity to have this degree of affordable housing is one that the county can't pass up based on everything the county has said about its care for affordable housing. My teacher is a, my wife is a teacher in the city schools and I work at UVA Hospital. A lot of our coworkers have to come from the surrounding counties because they can't find affordable apartments to rent in the Charlottesville or Albemarle area. I would love for them to have shorter commutes, to put less pollution in the environment from their cars, to have the chance to ride the bus into work rather than drive. I hope that you all will vote in favor of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I do not have anyone else with their hand raised. Wait, I, I take that back. Next, I have a couple more people. Nancy, please state your name, address, and where you live, and your time starts now.
Yes, good evening. My name is Nancy Trudeau, and I live at 2666 English Oak Circle. I respectfully request the application to be denied. Under Section 33.7 of the zoning codes, the commission has a duty in zoning when considering the zoning map amendments to do so according to good zoning practices, which are clearly not accomplished by this development. Not, not by this development on behalf of the surrounding residents, but of the very residents who will reside within the development. A very inherent and critical component of good zoning is set forth in the Commonwealth of Virginia, Section 15.2-2283, which has been cited by a few of the previous presenters. This section of the code requires compliance with the purpose of the zoning ordinance. It's a section double small i to reduce or prevent congestion in public streets. The applicant's proposed development is so condensed, it's so overinflated that it not only puts Forest Lakes residents, the general public, and those that use the the streets located at Ashwood Boulevard and Route 29, but the applicant's own homeowners on congested roads, which are currently dangerous at the high traffic hours of the days. Just yesterday evening, I came in at about 5:30 and the turning lane that goes onto Ashwood Boulevard was backed up by five cars. To get to that turning lane, you crest a hill. And that hill is a blind spot even in good weather. The proposed use of Ashwood Boulevard by these developers is unnecessary. If the development was more reasonably sized, they could use their own existing roads, the Ridgewood Drive Road and the road located that serves the developer's own motel site. There's no reason to use Ashwood Road. I respectfully request the commissioners do their duty to revisit this road site for the benefit of all the residents, including those who will live in the development, so that the roads are not to prevent the roads from becoming increasingly dangerous and even ultra-hazardous in good weather conditions. Thank you for this opportunity to present.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Berannick. I spoke earlier. I just want to point out, we are not opposed to underfunding anybody. We are not opposed to having people that can't afford wages in our neighborhood. We are opposed to the buildings. That's what we said. The building environment. We need, just need to read overhaul the plan. I want to make sure everyone's crystal clear. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. That's, this is, you made your points very well. And thank you for your, for your comments. And thank you for the other, Carolyn, or the others. Carolyn, are there others who have their hands up that are first-time speakers?
Carolyn?
Hello. I'm sorry. My name is Christopher Schmidt. Go ahead, Chris. Oh, okay, I got muted. Sorry. Yeah, my name is Christopher Schmidt, 17 Wall Street in Cambridge, Massachusetts, actually. I'm calling in as a longtime fan of Charlottesville and someone who's actually been looking to move to the area and have been paying more attention to things as a result of that. I wanted to say, having spent most of today actually reviewing a lot of details around this project, I'm really excited to see this type of development being considered in the Charlottesville area. I think that the value of the affordable housing offers here are very very strong. I think that, as another commenter said, there's obviously a lot of value to this community. You know, this is, this is a place where people really do feel You know, this is, this is a place where people really do feel like they have the best of all worlds, living near Charlottesville, living in the county and being so close to so many things that are so great. And I think it's really an opportunity to, to take some of the spaces, greenfield development, and, and create something that is, you know, able to have more affordable homes, able to have more people who can, who can live there, who otherwise wouldn't be able to. You know, having, having lived in a much more dense city than this area, I think people express concern about open space, about many things like that. And, and I think that, you know, all of these things are livable. You know, being able to have a home to live in is really the important part. You know, I don't care if this is COVID, if this is talking about open space for recreation. I don't care about, about any of those things. All of those things are, are, are something that you can do. But if all you can afford to do is live in your car, then, then you don't have access to any of those amenities anyway. And, and something is almost always better than nothing, which is what a lot of people, you know, have or are driving, what may, they're not living in their car, but they're spending a lot of time there. So I think this project is, is, is well thought out. I think the design, you know, Soviet is such a, an abusive term that's thrown around for something that really I don't think accurately describes what this project is. It looks like a big, good project. I'm sure you all will do the best thing with this, but it, it really seems compelling to me and I, and I hope that you all look forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more person, Travis.
Travis? Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Travis Pietala from Southern Environmental Law Center. Thank you for the chance to comment. First, I wanted to acknowledge the applicant's commitment to affordable housing. And we appreciate the changes presented tonight encompass a broader range of AMI and increase the rental affordability period to 30 years. One issue we did still want to briefly address tonight is public transit. We are a bit concerned to see that the applicant is not offering any commitments or contributions towards transit in this application, particularly in light of the number of affordable units being proposed. Given the distance of this site from the county's jobs and activity centers, without access to transit, most residents will have to rely exclusively on personal vehicles, which can greatly increase household transportation costs, not to mention exacerbating traffic impacts on Route 29 and undermining the county's climate goals. It's also clear that Places 29 envisions future transit service along this corridor. And the new developments will be made transit ready to help facilitate the creation of this service. And indeed, other recent developments, including neighboring Brook Hill, have included transit components. So along those lines, we encourage the applicant to commit to putting in a transit stop and contribute funding toward future transit service as part of this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more. I have, Jason is up next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Excellent. Thank you. I am Jason Ino Fuentes, 2103 Aspen Road up on Pantops. I want to mention how impressed I was with the very well-fertilized grassroots movement we were witness to tonight. And I want to echo some of the points made and generally agree with concerns about the environment, traffic, and community. And that's, it's for those reasons that I rise in support of this development. Affordable housing is an imperative that cannot be set aside for the interests of a select few homeowners. The development would represent an incredible value across 30 years to those that aren't in a position to buy well-manicured lawn on a quarter acre lot. So many of the speakers proudly proclaimed their longevity in this area. Imagine how many more lives could be impacted 30 years from now? How many more lives could say that they were now residents in Almarle County for 30 years thanks to this opportunity? I hope that the concerns are well taken from the Forest Lakes community. But I do think that the priority needs to be the housing that this opportunity represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, do we have anybody else that would like to speak? If you have already spoken, please do not raise your hand. This is for people that have, have not had the opportunity to speak yet. I have Caroline.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes. It starts now.
Great. My name is Caroline. I'm also a Charlottesville resident. And I would like to just full voice my full support. I think Jason said it perfectly. This housing development is one of the things that, as someone who wants to maybe buy a house here and settle down here, definitely something that I think should be the number one priority because, and I, I hear the concerns of other people who've been living in the area for a long time. But I think that affordable housing is really the thing that we need to focus on and prioritize. And the way that we do that is through where we spend our money and, and how, how we build our, our community. Thank you for your time.
So Carolyn? So I'm going to ask, unless someone has something new, a new thought on this, that we're now getting into the place where if we're on a public hearing, people would have been standing up in their support. And so I don't necessarily know how, I don't know how many more, if, how many different views we have that would be added, that would, that would help to shape our, our deliberations in this conversation. So unless someone has a very different approach to, to this conversation, to the various, to the various things which you've heard in this conversation, I think it's about time that the public hearing part closed.
We do not have anyone else asking to speak at this time.
Isn't that funny how that just happened? So I'm going to close the public hearing. And I am going to do another chair's prerogative. We're going to take a 10-minute break. And then when we come back, the applicant will have five minutes before we go back into our own deliberation. So it's, it's 9:02 and so I will see everyone back here at 9:17. And thank you for every word, every sentiment that we've received and YouTube offered to us this evening. It has been a gift to this, from, from the community to us and I certainly, on behalf of the, on behalf of the commission, thank you for that. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and thank you for your, for your passion. No, I mean 9:17. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you well, yeah.
Good. I've got all kinds of like, you know, I think technology, the bits that we had at the beginning of this year ago, they're all starting to wear out. There he is, there he is. Okay, let's roll. Counselor Long, are you ready to do your five-minute summation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Go.
All right. Let me, let me one minute. This one. Okay, can you all see this slide with the yellow circles on it?
Yes.
Great. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman Valerie Long. Obviously, we cannot in five minutes rebut all of the comments that were made tonight. So first, let me say that we have very clear responses and rebuttals to absolutely every single point that was made in opposition. So to the extent anyone has a question about what our response to any of them might be, please know that we are ready and able to respond. I want to start with the traffic study. And we do have our certified traffic engineer here tonight, Carl Holtren, who can certainly jump in and respond to any specific questions or help in any way. But I want to just note for the record that our professionally prepared traffic that our professionally-prepared traffic study demonstrates very clearly that whether this project is built or not, the traffic will remain the same under the no-build conditions from 2023. It's a level of service of C in both morning and afternoon. And likewise, with the build conditions with the improvements that the owner and applicant will make, the level of service will continue to be a C. At the very worst case, there'll be a two-second delay in the overall. We actually think it will be much better if you look under the the bottom row there, what's called the lost time adjustment. That's the realistic estimate that our traffic engineer makes. We can discuss that if, if anyone's interested. I want to reiterate the distance of these buildings from the adjacent parcels and from the adjacent roadways. You saw some renderings that were extremely misrepresentative of what the views will be. The view you saw here from the association's rendering made it look like it was about 20 feet away. In fact, it's 115 feet from the roadbed of Ashwood to the buildings. The five-story buildings that people have expressed concerns about are 540, 480 feet away from adjacent parcels, 321 feet from the property line, et cetera. Significant distances that will not have any impact on any roads, anyone's views, anyone's house. It will not create an impact. There's not been any actual evidence of any actual impacts on the traffic, on any of the neighbors, or on anyone in the neighborhood. It's all entirely speculative. By contrast, we've provided actual evidence that there will be no impacts created by this project. This is an exhibit our civil engineers prepared. You look at the top, you can see the property line is, is here. The trees that are in yellow are the trees that will remain. The trees that are in brown are those that will be removed to accommodate the project. Down below is those trees in plan view, or in whatever you call it. That's what it will look like from the road. So the images that you saw from the criticisms of the project are entirely inaccurate and imply and show that all of the trees that are on the B dot parcel will be removed when in fact it is just not the case. We also have two views. These are in our plans. I won't spend a lot of time on them, showing the relative height and impact on the existing single-family homes in Cricklewood Court. And the significant distance, there's 100, there's 88 feet just from the property line to the edge of those properties. There's a lot of natural vegetation, including on-site. We do not think that they will tower over them. Likewise, the existing townhomes in Ashland are at a higher elevation than the Cricklewood Court homes were. The impact is even less there. The distance is about 88 feet to the property line. And again, lots of vegetation, and that's the buffer and the setback in that area. We also have a number of renderings. If I don't get through all of these, know that we have them. This, these are architects prepared these, showing what these buildings would look like, both with the trees. And by the way, these are winter views, so these are the worst views. This is if the trees are opaque. You can tell, let's get another one. You can tell that the buildings do not tower above the trees. Again, you can see the trees in the foreground, the criticisms, the renderings that the residents showed. Among other things, they removed all of the trees from the Ashwood median to make the image look worse than it actually is. Likewise, here, you can see the trees that will remain in the median along the berm. No one's taking out this berm, contrary to what has been stated. And you can see those buildings in the background. This is a five-story building. It's not going to tower over anyone. It's only seven feet taller, in fact, than the four-story buildings.
Your five minutes is up.
I took a quick screenshot when this was up, proposed. You can see they've taken out the trees in the median. They've taken out all of the trees along here. They've taken out the trees off the B dot parcel. That's just inaccurate and does not accurately reflect the project.
Your five minutes is up.
Thank you. We would again be happy to respond to any questions from any members of the commission that we may not have had a chance to address, including school capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to pull this back to us. And I'm going, I'm going to look for hands on how we move forward on this. Who would like to start the conversation? Or there's questions for staff, questions for staff? And we have.
Can I ask?
Just in your area, we have the full range of staff. We have, we have zoning, we have our housing person. I think we have, did I see traffic? We have our, our traffic people. So if you've got particular questions for us, if you have the various experts here tonight to be able to sort of respond to them, sorry Jenny.
I just wanted to ask Valerie a question, if that's okay? Um, okay, it's a big one on my list, but so I'll go with the, I got to see that slide for a few seconds, and I wish that I could see it again, but I wrote down some things, so I'll just keep what I have in my head and we can move on.
You know, staff may know it. You should, staff doesn't know the question.
It's okay. My question was really about, or do you want us? I don't want to really be the first one to go, but I will, I will. Okay, I'm here. But I don't want to give up my opportunity to say something later, though. Okay, what I wanted to ask is, is one of the things I have on my list. And I just want to be clear that I want to figure out a way to get to yes. And so, one of the things on my list that, that is a concern that I have is how, what the view would be, the buffering from the proposed development, the five buildings that are the two-over-twos and the existing neighborhoods. And Valerie did show a slide that indicated, I think at one point, there was 88 feet from the property line to the building. So that really helped me see that. I guess there's a more generous area there than I had imagined. And seeing that slide from her helped me understand the possibilities with buffering that could happen there, so. So I feel much better about that one. I did want to ask if Andy wanted to respond to the question that I think Karen had asked about the minimum amount of open space? And, you know, what he had put in staff's report. And then I think when Karen asked that question, Valerie responded at the beginning, but I don't, I didn't know if we could hear from Andy about, you know, how that would be addressed and how they could fulfill the requirement, if that's something that, you know, as Valerie said, that would happen during site review. But if Andy could speak to that piece, that would be good. And then I'll let other people ask questions.
So yes, the planned residential development zoning district does require a minimum of 25% open space, recreational space, which is depicted on the application plan. It's approximately 4.88 acres. And that would, that includes, as proposed by the applicant, the buffers, the undisturbed open space, such as the preserved steep slopes, and the recreational areas that are shown on the application plan sheet. The zoning ordinance does state that in the PRD, the PRD is really a zoning district that is intended to have an improved the level of amenities. And so what the applicant has proposed is the minimum required. However, without the substitution request or more information, at least, staff cannot determine at this time whether there is an improved level of amenities. As Ms. Long mentioned, the substitution request is something that can be provided if the site plan it is not required at the rezoning stage. And I do recognize that the applicant has shown a dog park and a pool area on the conceptual layout, which is, I believe, sheet four of the plan. However, on the actual application plan, which is sheet three, those areas are only designated as recreation areas without really identifying whether those additional amenities such as a dog park and a pool would be provided on those areas. So I don't know if you have any other questions or if that answers it.
That, that, that does answer it. And I guess I just want to kind of keep that in the conversation as, as other people have that, that we want to, like, I guess, just lift that up or that the applicant. It sounds like if there was more of a commitment to maybe not where certain things would be, but that they would be included, then that would maybe satisfy that a little bit more. But that's just a thought I had. I actually did have one other question before I'll, I'll let other people ask. And I wondered, and I should know this, but I don't. When I read kind of the fine print with the for-sale affordable unit, I noticed that it says that the, the 90-day timeframe can start no more than 60 days before the CO is issued. And so I just wondered, how is that in our policy? Is that already something that can happen? It just struck me as a little bit odd, but maybe it's already there and I just never realized it.
I would defer to Ms. Pethia, our principal planner for housing. She's with us this evening.
That is standard language in our proppers. We typically ask developers to provide a 90-day for-sale period where the units are offered to income-qualifying homebuyers. They quite often start that period 60 days before the CEO is issued in order to make sure that they have a homebuyer for that unit before anyone can occupy it. So that, that's standard language.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Daniel. Oh, wait, hold on Jenny, were you, were you, were you finished?
Oh, well, I don't know if I'm finished, but I, for the time being, yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Since I have four of us, I just want to get some clarifications because there's a lot of, lot of different numbers and, and change in what was being offered. But I'm trying to figure out if I heard this right, but the commitments of four of us was for the rental units, which is those interior and the townhomes were for sale, but there was no commitment to affordable housing. If I, did I get that wrong or did I understand that correctly? And there might have been some comment that they were, I think some, or, you know, association to the existing Percol Commons offering that are on the, possibly on the edge of affordable housing and the high 200s, low 300s. I don't, I guess, so there's two questions. There's one, do I get that right? And then the second question is for Dr. Pethia, which is where does that townhome rank in the scale of affordability for the median income? Because when I look at, you know, kind of the policy document that we had, there's an increasing in that 300 plus, and there's this kind of hard line, and we're seeing a decreasing of units in the 200 to 299,000 range. And so these are right on that kind of cut line between where we're seeing increasing and we're seeing a decrease in the stock. I'm just trying to understand how affordable are these townhomes for our Mount County citizens at, at that price point?
Well, I'll take that first part of the question you just asked, and then I'll turn it back over to Andy for the specific numbers, because I don't remember what those are. Our current policy puts the affordable sale price at $243,750, so it's kind of right in the middle. And we set that for 80% of every median income. The proposed housing policy recommends bringing that sale price down, and we would have two different sale prices. The, the first one for the affordable housing, and those would be for households with incomes up to 80% AMI. Would bring that maximum sale price down to 100, I may get it wrong, but under $200,000. And then to lower the maximum sale price down to about $215,000 for workforce housing. And that would, that would be that 80% to 120% AMI level. But right now, it, it's right in where our, our current policy sits, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, can I address the question about the affordability? No, thank you. Not right. Thank, thank you very much. Andy.
Can you repeat your question, Mr. Bailey, about the numbers?
Just wanted to understand, based on the most recent proffer by the applicant, is like, where is the dedicated, you know, kind of on paper dedicated affordable housing? Is it in the rental units? Or is there any commitment in the townhomes? Or is the townhomes kind of a separate? I'm just trying to get how I should be thinking about the affordable structure of this proposed neighborhood, you know, townhome versus rental units and how all that works.
Regarding the new proposal that Ms. Long presented this evening, that hasn't been submitted to staff yet, so I really can't say on the 75%, I believe she mentioned what those numbers are. I haven't seen any plan or anything like that. So I don't know if Ms. Long may be able to expand on that more. Because I really, I really don't know without having seen anything yet from the applicant.
Let, let me just sort of reframe that. But we, we did have in the original documents that were shared before that there would be affordable, not only would there, would there be affordability in the, in the apartments, but there would also be in the townhouses, whether or not there'd be the stacked one or the other one, I think. Is that not correct?
So on the cover sheet of the application plan regarding the affordable house units, it was left up to the owner's discretion. The exact note is, let me read it, "At least 50% of the total number of dwelling units shall be affordable housing units, which may be for-sale units or rental units or a combination thereof in the owner's discretion." So it was not committed one way or the other, but was left up to the owner.
Thanks. That's all for me right now. Sure. Thank, thank you, Andy and Dr. Pethia.
Thanks. Let me just get a clarification, something that Jenny answered. So we saw from the last, from a few slides from, from the applicant, that they have an 88 buffer on the, on the east side of the property, so the east side of property next to the, next to the existing community. But yet, on the, on the side plane of the, on the proposed side plane, draft side plane has, has 20. How do we maintain? How is it determined whether or not it's 88 or it's 20? How does that become the firm number?
So for the buffers, I believe the actual buffer area would be 20, 20 feet, and then that additional 60 feet or so is kind of left open on the application plan. However, there is a section of it that's dedicated to the travelway that encircles around a couple of the structures. So within that 80 feet, it wouldn't all be buffer area, but could include some pavement or sidewalk, travelway, that sort of thing. But the actual landscaped or vegetated forested buffer would only be that 20 feet.
Do I see your hands? So no other questions? So are we ready to move to a decision? Will you, so you're waving or you just, yes, please?
Yes, I, I wanted to bring up another issue that, that I think was presented by some of the residents, and I thought it was compelling in terms of the topography of that area. And we didn't really hear much, or at least I don't think I've heard anything about what we're doing in terms of stormwater management on the site. And at least from what we saw, and I, I don't remember seeing a topo in the application. But we did see one from, from the residents. And it, it was an interesting topography. I, I didn't appreciate that there would be a 60-foot drainage ditch there. It looks natural or naturalized, but But um, uh, that's significant and and it does seems to go downhill towards towards the the existing developments. So I think it definitely would be interesting, you know, certainly in the site plan process, that's going to be um, um, looked at more, much more carefully, but I I just found it interesting that wasn't discussed uh, in the application and it seems to be a a sensitive site when it comes to rainwater and and obviously so much is going to to impervious. Uh, from where it is today, there's a significant percentage uh, difference there. So um, more than anything, more than a question is really, it's really, uh, well, I guess the question, Andy, would be has there been some discussion of that in in the process uh, that you can shed light on? Or 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 not?
Yes, um, and let me share one of the sheets of the um, plan was provided. Um, it's got an area of So can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this is one of the sheets in the application plan with some of the conceptual rating. Um, and Mr. Karazan, as you mentioned, there is uh, at least conceptual stormwater management facilities up here in the northeast corner of the site. Um, adjacent to the Ashland Townhomes Development and then Cricklewood Court is up in the very northeastern corner. Um, so I'll try to zoom in. This is where some of the conceptual stormwater management is, including um, some that the applicant has proposed underneath this recreational area, kind of in the middle. Um, and then there is, you may be able to see an outfall right here on the uh, very edge of the property. Um, so that's some of the conceptual stormwater that's been shown. I know our county engineer has reviewed at least the conceptual grading and stormwater management and had no objections, but stormwater management is something that would have to be addressed at site plan stage and would have to meet all of the um, state requirements, yes, and key requirements, that sort of thing.
Well, thank you um, for providing that because I I uh, it wasn't highlighted. I did not pick up that that was a some kind of management. Certainly for the amount of impervious, it would have to be larger than that is is my guess, but they'll work through that in the site plan. Um, and and then I just a a a follow on comment to my initial question. Um, referencing the cemetery. Ms. Long's comments of a survey, uh, unfortunately didn't allay my concern. Um, survey might identify the the property line there, but it's not going to do any archaeology. And so um, given the amount of disturbance, I I do believe that some level of archaeology, particularly if it is historic, I don't know the ages of these uh, um, plots, but uh, understanding what is potentially outside of of that fence line or even property line um, might be beneficial before you start digging up the area. So so a level of archaeology I I would recommend is is warranted in a site like this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Others, comments, questions? Karen?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments in response. Can you hear me, Julian? Can you hear me? Okay. Um, I just wanted to respond to the citizen concerns about stormwater. The county would would not permit this site, the site plan stage to move forward unless the applicant had satisfied all our regulations for treating uh, the post development runoff and the post development runoff must equal the pre development runoff. Now, having said that, um, modern stormwater management is not able to mimic nature exactly. There will be alterations to the hydrology. I am, I am disappointed that giving the 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 large amount of area they have to work with, that they haven't done anything terribly creative here. And Ms. Long, having come before our commission on many, many occasions, uh, probably would would have already advised these applicants that this is a particularly green commission and we look to see developments that are progressive. I I I'm, I'm very supportive of the need for affordable housing in our community. I am really disappointed at the notion that that means that we have to sacrifice green space and adequate recreation area because if you think about it, people who who are uh, lower income don't have money to go on fancy vacations and, you know, do all these wonderful things. And here we are in the COVID situation and everyone is very aware of the need to be able to access green space close to where you live, perhaps without having to get in a car. And so I am, I am very troubled by the lack of green space and I I don't also understand why the decision was made to uh, put most of the buffer along Route twenty nine and yeah, and move close towards the neighborhoods. A a twenty foot vegetated buffer will do very little to offset the the noise pollution and the light pollution from this new development. It needs to be a lot thicker to respect the neighborhood. And I just don't agree that affordable housing means that we can't have green space and quality development. And I personally have been involved in design of some affordable housing projects that have wonderful green amenities to them because everyone deserves a good quality of life. And so I am not leaning in favor of this development at this time because of that. That said, the developer, uh, our our recommendation is only advisory to the board of supervisors. And the developer would certainly have ample opportunity to amend their application uh, once it leaves the planning commission, whether we end up voting for it or against it. Thank you.
Anyone else feel called to sort of make a comment or to ask a question? Okay, folks, uh, Corey.
Yeah, I I kind of share similar sentiments to Commissioner Firehawk. I mean, I think the affordable housing pieces certainly um, is admirable. There there's no question about that. But at the same time, I think we're charged with looking at projects holistically and how that impacts our our community. Some of the things I had jotted down as concerns. Uh, we talked a little bit about the school impacts, but uh, I didn't really see much movement in in the answer that I received, put it that way, and actually rectifying the issue. Um, I have concerns or I was a little concerned. I didn't hear anything about public transit and this this notion to kind of work with the county. If you're going to have all these affordable housing units, there's no public transit there. Do we just leave it alone? Do we just turn a blind eye to it? I was a little disappointed to hear any kind of movement towards some kind of consensus or resolution on that. Um, Louis made a great point uh, about the archaeology piece and Karen did the same. Um, I I trust staff's judgment as well. I mean, a lot of things that he pointed out in staff report, I certainly agreed with. And I'm almost wondering, you know, you've seen some renderings by Ms. Long. Um, were any renderings done from the perspective of uh, existing house, if you will, in the neighborhood, right? So all the renderings we've seen are from street view, if you will, driving down the road. But how about the rendering to rebuttal some of the things that we saw from the citizens were to say, hey, in my backyard, I will see exactly this. Um, so there there are some concerns there without a doubt. And at the same time, I still like a proposal should be looked at holistically. And even though affordable housing is great, we certainly need it. Nobody's arguing that we want the best project for for all of our citizens. So that's kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Rick, so I see Mr. Copeland, I see you have your hand up, but I need to share with you during this time, this is, this is like the family talking to each other. And so you, I'm not calling upon you. So I don't feel as if I ignore you, but kind of I am ignoring you. But it's it's for good, it's for good reason that I'm doing so. Rick.
The question I would pose is twenty years from now, what will this development look like? Will it be another project? Like Cabrini Green in Chicago, where Passion Homes in Philadelphia, where in this era of our concern with construction of more affordable housing units, we parallel the logic of the New Deal in the nineteen thirties to provide housing for relocating African Americans to cities like Chicago or in Philadelphia with Passion Homes, so that GI is returning to the states would have housing units available at low cost. And those units now, as we all know, they've disappeared because in terms of urban affairs, they were seen as, yes, means of providing housing to which one of the speakers this evening in defense of the project spoke. But they didn't satisfy the need of a community to have a soul. And there is my concern here. I can't find a soul to this project. In Southwood, which is also an affordable housing project, there's a soul because there was a commitment to ensure that there would be open space, perhaps not as much as some people wanted, but there was a commitment to open space that was there that was meaningful. This is not meaningful level of open space. Um, and I want to cover the points. I think this project has a lot to recommend it, but if it were a play and it had just opened up tonight here in New Haven and we are the New Haven audience, I would say it's not ready for Broadway. It's got a lot of issues that need to be worked out. And what needs to be worked out? Well, it needs to be greener with more open space and a demonstration that this is a community that's livable, not just a place where you warehouse people during the day, but it's livable. Secondly, therefore, it needs to be less dense and less impersonal than this is. Thirdly, there has to be provision for public transit stops on twenty nine. They are, the developer has proposed that it will be worked out with CAT that there'll be a stop. They don't have any responsibility to provide a weatherproof stop for people to get on a bus and go north and across the way to work with the owner of that land to provide another stop for the bus to go south. And thereby also a need to provide a crosswalk, a crosswalk so that residents can safely cross twenty nine with a with a red light on twenty nine, have an island in the middle where that safely they can be if they get caught in traffic and then I get across to the other side. This does not begin to contribute to addressing the impacts on the Apple Mall County School Division enrollment picture. But neither for the elementary school, the middle school, longer term, but most especially for Apple Mall High School. The project needs to honor setbacks, as is the county's expectation, and yet they are asking us to waive them. There's a special exception. They need to respect the master plan as to scale and character. It's too dense, too many units in too small a space. They had need to adhere to more planned residential development principles, which staff has pointed out. They do not meet all of them at all. They need to work on the traffic flow issue on Ashwood Boulevard. I have learned over a period of nine years that as Prime Minister Disraeli of Great Britain once said, there's statistics and statistics and then there're damn statistics, but not all of the statistics are accurate. And I don't for one minute believe in traffic analysis over the long term because they often underestimate, in my experience, the actual traffic flows. And finally, there needs to be clarity here how residents can afford to maintain the roads within this community, plow them when it snows and to cover the annual costs through their HOA fees for pool and exercise facilities when now seventy five percent of the units are going to be affordable housing. Where does the money come from? These are not inexpensive. And finally, who's going to be responsible for these roads if in the future they are not well maintained? We know that game where the residents say, here, county, you take them over. So I think we're setting ourselves up here for tremendous expenses going forward uh, under this proposal. And the question I have, does afford, is affordable housing the tail that wags the dog in Albemarle County? All projects, once they can say there's affordable housing and a meaningful number to it, that affordable units, do we throw out all of our planning principles, all of our good judgment, all of our awareness, as Karen has pointed out, of balancing the needs within a community to make it livable and workable, just to say, oh, we're getting affordable housing units? That's the logic behind Cabrini Green. That's the logic behind Passion Homes. I worry about what we are establishing in embracing this density in this location.
Yeah. Uh, where are we, folks? Jenny?
Um, well, I guess um, I think my initial uh, reaction to staff's report and to all of the attachments um, today was that I think there's a lot of things here that are good and then and then a little bit of it feels like there's lots of loose ends. And so when you get into the neighborhood model principles and the attempts to not be able to fulfill those, uh, you know, it feel, it feels like to me, especially with the time that the applicants had, that I'd hoped to see more of that um, and more information that staff could have because I feel like some of those could be met. And yet it reads that they mostly are somewhat are met, but not all the way. Um, and so I guess the big things that I have been able to cross off, um, you know, I think I could be convinced about the height. Um, I think that when you bring us brand new information, especially when it's really important information, that's a change of substance the night of planning commission, I think it is something that's, you know, it's great to add to the conversation, but it leaves staff, you know, not able to respond because he hasn't had that submitted. And then it leaves us with questions about something that I think is key and is really important. Um, and so, and I think that some, and it, to me, it hinders our ability to talk about some of the other issues. I mean, I've kind of gone through my list and I feel like I'm pushing things to the side because we've spent more time. Um, you know, learning about something new and then, you know, the level of public comment, which is great, also does tend to wear us down a little bit. So then maybe we aren't asking the great questions we could ask. We have staff here that can answer stuff about traffic and these type of things. And and I think that's too bad because like I said before, I really would like to figure out how to get to yes. And but I don't know that we're able to do that tonight when I start to hear what other people have to say. Um, and that then that was my initial take on the application was gosh, there's loose ends. You know, sometimes we see these things and people say, hey, we're willing to work on this before we go to the board. And sometimes that happens. And sometimes that's kind of a scary thing to have something with so many loose ends that we let it go and just hold for the best. But that's certainly the applicant's um, prerogative to do that. Um, I guess the last comment that I'll have is the public transit thing. Um, I absolutely agree. That seems to be a piece that's missing. Um, and I've already talked about the green space. I guess I'm not, the density piece doesn't bother me so much because I feel like there's ways that it can work um, is right there on twenty nine. Um, so it does have access to that. Um, but I do see that the, is that the trade off? You know, if we say we want more green space, then we lose um, those units or is there a creative alternative that we just haven't seen here yet? That's the most, the end of my comments.
Well, we're at that point where people have spoken, people have said what they, what's been, what's been on their minds and what they've been sort of wrestling with for the last What they've been sort of wrestling with for the last, uh I guess for the last sort of five or six days. And I don't know what we want to do. What are we doing?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to, to make a motion. It feels like we have some consensus.
Please, sir. Would you like Andrew to put uh his piece up, please?
Yes, sir.
Remember, we have two, when we get to this, but we have two that we need to look at.
Okay, thank you. All right, um I move to recommend denial of ZMA twenty twenty. Zero 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 seven RST residences for the reasons stated in the staff report. And the reasons stated within the, the conversation that we've had amongst the commission.
Second.
Was that seconded by Rick?
Yes.
Uh Ms. Long, is your hand up for, is your hand up for pressing matter here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um we, you know, obviously there's been a lot of comments made. I will reiterate, we are prepared to address all those if asked. Um but if that is not the preference of the commission tonight. We would be more than happy to um take the comments that we've received tonight. And go back and amend our plans and certainly update the affordable housing. Work on the precise location of the transit and.
So that's, so I thought you were asking about something else, but that's not what we're doing.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
So, so you're asking about you will take whatever we decide to go for, and I thought you might be asking for a, a different kind of situation.
No, in fact, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we would like to request a deferral at this point so that we can. Take the comments that we've received tonight and see if we can do our best to address those. So that we could come back to you with an application that hopefully could uh gain your support and recommendations.
Can you take us out of the, uh Andrew, can you take us out of this? Uh can I see, can I have counsel? So counsel in, in, in Charles, we have a request by the applicant for a deferral. Can you just provide some guidance, please?
Well, a motion for a deferral if made by a member of the commission is in order at any time before a vote. So if there's a commissioner that wishes to make a motion for a deferral, that would be in order.
So we also have a motion on the floor that was, that was. Uh that was made and seconded. Now, I know we can table that and move to another one, but I'm not sure what our procedure is to table a motion.
If, if there's a commissioner that wishes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh the. Oh, I was simply going to say now it's time we can, we've had a motion and the second, and now it's time for discussion. At which time we could also discuss this concept of deferral.
All right, but I'd like to, to have before we do a discussion before, whether like, whether I'm going to make a motion to. Which is coming.
Well, we haven't actually discussed the vote that's on the table.
I recognize that, but we could also table the, we could table the motion if we need to.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think what we would need to discuss is whether Cory would want to withdraw. His motion.
That's right.
And whether I would then second that withdrawal so that we come back to the status quo ante. Prior to the motion being made. And then we have a discussion as to whether we would want to consider a deferral. Or whether in fact, we want to proceed with the vote. But then we remove the pressure of the motion for the actual vote.
Correct.
So, so Mr. Chair, I'm happy to withdraw my motion.
And is the, and the president's seconded. I can't hear you.
Happy to withdraw my second.
So now we've had from the applicant a request to consider a motion for, for deferring. I believe counsel has suggested that there needs to be a motion for that. So if someone feels so called to move for defer.
So moved.
Been moved. There's a second.
Second.
Seconded now is a discussion on the, on the defer.
I simply uh did want to say that. I do think this development can be fixed in terms of the things that we have recommended. Whether that meets the applicant's pro forma or not is up to them. We have absolutely no idea what that is and nor do we usually know that. So um I, I just think that we need a, a much more quality development with more green space, more attention to. Fitting in with the character of the neighborhood, public transportation. Even the pool area is, you know, that pool, you can't swim twelve months out of the year here in Virginia. So what, you know, is there a community facility or some other type of, of. Community gathering space besides a swimming pool? Is there some way? That there's a diversity of opportunities within this development? And that you don't have to walk all the way across it to access them, buffering the neighborhoods. There's a whole host of things. I don't want to waste your time reiterating the evening. Um I, I really just wanted to say that I am in. In favor of defer.
Are there other comments that Ben?
I can, I'm brief. I, I want to support this. I'm a huge proponent of affordable housing. Um but I agree. What we've already talked about, but I, I'm a little bit discouraged that. It constantly feels like has to be a zero sum game that we, you know, we can't balance a lot of things that have been discussed tonight with affordable housing. And I think we can, as a county, can do better, that it doesn't have to be a zero sum game. It doesn't have to be perceived as a zero sum game. And I hope that through this deferral and the potential of this development is realized. And so in my comments there.
Cory.
Yeah, I, I really wanted the spirit of the project to be successful. So I was happy to hear about the deferral. I would just also recommend. Sounds like some more community engagement needs to happen. I mean, I can't direct anyone to do that, obviously, but after seeing what I saw tonight. There's some unfinished business that I would think probably should occur within those communities that surround the project.
Anyone else that wants to speak to the motion? And so the motion, motion, we have a motion that's been made before. It's been properly seconded to defer this, for this matter to be deferred. Uh hearing another conversation, would you call the role, please, call the vote, please?
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Ms. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Bivins.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph. Ms. Firehawk.
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Thank you.
Uh, Andy, did you want to say something?
Wanted to clarify that since no date was specified, this would be an indefinite deferral.
Yes. Yes. So what we have, uh let's see, where's, where's counsel, I've been a long. Uh there she is. So um thank you for waving your, your way back from your, from your cameras. I can barely see you.
Sorry, I can't really get much closer and.
Okay, it's okay. Now that's Ben, it's okay. So you've heard, um you've heard the thoughts and the, and the cares. Of the planning commission. And I think I can say that each of us want this to be a successful project. But many of us felt that we were not provided with enough information for us to. To fall directly in, in, in the most positive way of supporting, of supporting the project. You heard from, as, as, as Cory said, from uh the community that perhaps needs a little bit more sitting with to understand the. Of, 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 of what this might mean for their lived in environment. And so if you will take this plus your, your, your team and your distinguished owner. And go back and think about that and work with our, uh work with staff in a way that, that helps to advance all of this, I think we will all be waiting. Uh to hear and to see how this comes back to us at a time in the future.
Thank you.
Um, thank you all for your commitment, for your time, and we're going to move on. So you're free to stay, but we've got some additional. Committee reports. Daniel.
Uh had a good um Rio CAC meeting, I guess, last Thursday. Um I uh. We, we had a, a good discussion um around the upcoming Rio corridor study. Uh I just wanted to relay back some of the discussions that we had around that were echoed. Concerns uh that the Rio North, where a lot of the development is occurring. Um with the Lofts and others is outside the scope of the study. And, and we know it is, but I just wanted to kind of relay that there is ongoing concerns with. The CAC and the broader community that, that is an exclusion to the, that study. Um and, and a continued source of concern. Um also talked a bit about the form based code and are interested to see how. How that continues and, and how that work plan unfolds, especially around incentives. Um to adoption of it. Uh so that's, that's the short kind of takeaway from the Rio CAC meeting this past week.
Thank you. Others, other, other reports. Rick.
You know, just very quickly, the fifth and Avon CAC, uh two members of that committee requested. That there be a discussion about the process by which ABC was approved by the board. That resulted in Roger Johnson and JT along with uh the county attorney, uh Greg Campner. Uh sitting in for that meeting and it was a very active discussion about. The, what the county can do in terms of expectations of. A particular plan and its execution by the developer. Um and I thought that was a productive discussion and hopefully helped. Make some members of the CAC a little bit more aware of some of the issues that are there that. Are, are not always immediately obvious.
Anyone else? Okay, uh how about Charles? Could you please tell us about what happened when our supervisor?
Sure. Uh, the board met on February seventeenth, regular meeting during the day. We had a work session on uh the section thirty-three. Is there any text amendments that came before this uh planning commission uh for similar work session? Went productive. Uh and then that evening, the board approved the ZMA for premier circle as recommended by the commission here. Uh I also wanted to just ma- make a note, uh we previously set up a work session uh in the schedule that was sent out a week or so ago. Uh for next Tuesday. Uh we're, you may have noticed on, on tonight's agenda, that has been canceled. Last time we met, we, we mentioned that we were going to uh adjust our schedule for the Croze master plan to incorporate some additional feedback uh in engagement with the. Prose CAC and community out there. Uh in doing so, we've adjusted our timeline with the board and some of those meetings. And so we didn't want to get ahead of that schedule. Um and so those uh the work sessions with the PC are going to be adjusted as well. We push back a month or so, so. Um we will not have a work session next week. And our next meeting will be on March twenty-third. We have a couple of public hearings and I'll. Present uh the annual report for twenty twenty to y'all as well.
There we go, an annual report coming our way. Uh, anything else? So do we have old business or new business? Or items from follow up? Kind people, thank you very much for having me this evening. We heard a, um we heard. A number of things from people who care from very different places about how their lived in community goes. And I think, I thank you for your guidance on this. And I hope and I, 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 I hope that the applicant and his uh team. Take it all back and do the kinds of things that will give us a, a, a different way of sitting in this project when it comes back to us. Uh there's Mark, do you want to say something, Mark? Okay. Um so also, um I'm hopeful that we get. Vaccines, shots or jabs as my, as my godson and he wouldn't ask me, have I gotten a jab? And uh I, I hope we are able to get them. Uh because, well, I'm not going to get real close to you. It would be really nice if we could all be in the same room somehow. And I'll let the powers that be figure out how we do that. Um but until we see each other in two weeks, please be safe. Um even though the numbers look like they're coming down, I think we heard something, but there's yet another variant. It's like there's another variant that just hit our shores. So be smart and wear your mask and we'll, we'll see each other in, in two weeks if not before. And thank you, on three weeks if not before. Three weeks? I don't know, we won't even recognize each other in three weeks. So you'll be safe.